Okay. Do I need to try to phone?
I assume he'll be here momentarily. And do we have Counselor McGill on Zoom? Ms. Thomas, do we know?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, make sure you're still with us, or again with us.
I'm here.
Okay. So let us call back to order the city council meeting. It's now 6:30, and a little after 6:30. Apologies to folks who've been waiting for a few minutes. We need to come out of the closed meeting, so has somebody got the certification motion ready?
I move that the city council members certify by a recorded vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Ms. Thomas, you take the vote, please.
Are our microphones on?
Yes.
Okay.
Microphones are on.
Great.
But I don't know about theirs.
Okay. Counselor McGill?
I should abstain since I was unable to attend due to technical difficulties.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, so that meeting, that motion passes four to nothing with one abstention. And so we are now back in open session. And we'll begin the 6:30 business meeting with a brief moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Counselors, are there any announcements? Anybody have any announcements?
Nope.
Okay. Let's see, any items for recognition? We don't have any pro forma motions this time. Any other items for recognition? All right. Ms. Thomas, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, number three, minutes. September 19th, council meeting. September 27th, joint work session with the Planning Commission. Four, ordinance. To amend, reordain, and reenact Chapter 30, Article 4 of the City Code. Real estate tax relief for elderly and disabled persons, second reading. Five, resolution. A resolution to appropriate funds for the Charlottesville Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court grant award, $240,000, second reading. Six, resolution. Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act grant, $452,704, second reading. Seven, resolution appropriating $700,000 from the CIP contingency to Avon Fuel Station Replacement Project, second reading. Eight, resolution appropriating $107,203.32 for the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center rent agreement, second reading. Nine, resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan funds, $565,000, second reading. Ten, resolution appropriating funds for bag distribution in connection with plastic bag tax, $20,000, second reading. Eleven, resolution appropriating insurance reimbursement in the amount of $4,650.55, Fire Department Truck Company, nine, one of two readings. Twelve, resolution appropriating funds for 2022 Bureau of Justice Assistance, FY22 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Program Local Solicitation, $23,459, one of two readings. Thirteen, resolution appropriating funds from the Victim Witness Assistance Program Grant, $257,024, one of two readings. Fourteen, resolution extending the contract for City Management Services with the Robert Bob Group, one reading.
All right, thank you. We will now take public comment regarding items on those 12 items on the consent agenda, just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined us by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you may press star nine. We will alternate in-person and virtual speakers. And please note that if you have something to talk about that is not one of those 12 items, either because you have pre-signed up to talk about something else, or because you've just got something else on your mind entirely, now is not the time. You will have a moment, in a few moments, to talk about other things. But if you have something on those 12 items, now is the time. Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak on one of the consent agenda items? See, nothing, nobody here? Anybody online, any virtual speakers wishing to address items on the consent agenda?
Mayor Snook, I see one raised hand.
All right.
Kat Meyer. Kat, you are on with counsel.
Yes, I just lowered my hand because I'd like to talk about the critical slope waiver instead of these 12 issues, so I just lowered my hand. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, we'll get to you later on. Okay, so is there anybody else online who would like to address the consent agenda?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right. So we'll close that public comment period. Is there anyone, councilors, have any questions or comments on consent agenda items? Okay. Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
I've got to get a motion. Motion.
Oh, that's true, we do need a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Great. Now, take the vote, please.
Yes. Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes five to nothing to adopt the consent agenda. Mr. Rogers, is the report from the City Manager's Office?
Yes, we have the written report that is listed. The agencies have provided a lot of background information on a number of issues, and we will continue to do that the first meeting of each month. So we'll be available to answer any questions if you have some about these items. Several meetings back, I observed that there had been a number of shootings in our community within a concentrated period of time, and we all expressed concern about that. And then a week or so ago, there was a violent incident on the mall at one of our establishments that resulted in the death of someone and two bystanders being hit by stray bullets. As a result of that incident, I had a meeting, the Chief, Chief DeRette and I, with the friends of downtown Seaville. And let's just say, as expected, it was a very robust discussion and very much appreciated and understood. When there is violence in the community in a concentrated period, naturally, people are going to be upset, and people are going to fear being in the location where those things are occurring. I thought it would be good tonight for Chief DeRette to walk through the crime statistics in our community and our trend over the last several years, to put in perspective where we are. We do want people to understand that we recognize that there are concentrations of activity, and the police department, Charlottesville Police Department is focusing on that. But by and large, when you consider the statistics in our community, it's still safe. That does not neglect the fact that we still have some things to do in certain areas throughout the city. And the Chief is going to walk through the statistics, and then we will talk about some of the actions that the department has taken and some of our collaborations with other agencies in the community. Chief DeRette?
Hey, David, can you add my PowerPoint, please?
Chief, you're a little soft. Can you either come closer to your mic or speak a little louder?
Can everybody hear me now?
That's better.
Yep. All right. Next slide, please. Going to the growing concerns regarding the shots fired in the city, I've compiled some of the following numbers to better understand the efforts that these calls or effects that these calls for service are occurring throughout the city. These are raw numbers that reflect the calls for service, but does not separate injuries, death, or confirmed by any kind of evidence base. These are just the calls for service. This slide here shows the last, from 2017 to October 23rd, when we had the shooting. In 2017, calls for service were 185 calls for service for shots fired. 18 was 181, a slight decrease in 2019 with 172. In 2020, we started to see an increase of 298, and it's a greater increase in 2021 with 322. October 23rd of this year, we are at 211 calls for services of shots fired. Next slide, please. The next map will illustrate some of the impacted communities over the last four years. And I looked at the 1920, 21, and 22 of those calls for services where we have the most impacted areas within our city. Next slide, please. This is 2019. The red highlights are the illustrated calls for services in the separate communities. And that spans from Page Street to Gordon Avenue area, Second Street, a little bit in the Orange Dale Prospect area, and South First Street. Next slide. In 2020, you could see that there is an increase in the Page Street area, South First Street, and First Street. Next slide, please. In 2021, it started in a higher increase in the Orange Dale Prospect area with South First Street or Second Street and the Page Street communities. Next. This year, from January to October 23rd, the increases are in the 10th Hardy Drive area and the Prospect communities. So these are the calls for service with the significant gun violence or shots fired calls in the city. Next slide, please. The crime statistics start from 2016 through 2021. We looked at our major crimes, which are homicides, forcible rapes, sodomy or aggravated assaults, robberies, and our weapons law violations. Next slide, please. As you can see, our current to date, our homicide rate are two. Our forcible rapes are 23, four in our statutory rapes. Aggravated assaults are at 118, robberies are 31, and a lot of weapons violations are at our 41. That was all the slides that I wanted to give you tonight. These cases are still active. I know there were some concerns about the downtown area. I have increased some of the presence of police officers on the downtown mall. And that's going through overtime, and if overtime is not fulfilled, then we're going to use our district officers to fill in those gaps in those areas. I'll take any questions that you may ask, but those numbers are the raw data that we currently have in these last five years, and we've still got two more months to go.
Questions for Chief DeRette?
Thank you for that. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, Chief DeRette. Just one of the things I wanted to speak to from the meeting that was held a week before last that you mentioned, Mr. Rogers. I think it's a couple of things that I feel like are important to say. First of all, when we have something, when we had the sort of intensity of incidents that we had recently, I think it's important for us to admit it and to talk about it, and I appreciate you all doing it. The second thing I want to say, to make it very clear to anyone who's, you know, listening, there was never any intention on my part or anyone else's part to connect the situation, that these most recent violence to the presence of unhoused individuals in the downtown mall. Those are very different issues. So I got an email not too long ago about that very topic. And so I just want to make it clear from my perspective and from the conversations that I've had, we realize that we need to serve the unhoused population downtown. We're committed to doing that. To be meeting, trying to meet with some folks from the Haven later this week, in fact. I think that we're committed to doing what we can to serve that population, and there's no connection or correlation at all with these incidents of gun violence. And then the last thing I want to say is that, you know, these incidents downtown get, I think, you know, understandably and rightfully, attention, but I am just as concerned as what's happening in West Haven and in the other places in the city. And I realize this is, you know, whenever I talk to folks, people remind me that this is complicated. It's complicated, the causes and how we try to effect change is complicated, too, because there's unintended consequences. So I'm just trying to, you know, be as clear as possible with where I stand on things and to say thank you for your work, Chief and Mr. Rogers. And, you know, I just, I want to, my view is that I hope that we can move past faults, contradictions. You know, I think that we can have a kind of police force in the city that's responsive, that's respectful, that is doing the right sorts of things. I was happy to go to the Foundation Ball a few weeks ago. At the same time, we want police that are accountable. And so, you know, I firmly believe we can do both. We can have police that are held accountable, and yet we can also support the police. So, anyway, enough said.
Mr. Wade was also at that meeting, and as a result, you gave a very good summary of what you heard. I think it would be very important to kind of repeat some of those items now because it represents, you know, some of the work that we have to do in our community to address the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Yes, I thought that it was a very good discussion. I thought it was passionate, and when, as I was hearing, you know, comments from both sides sitting back with Brian and the audience at first, I was like, you know, this is what democracy looks like. You know, you hear that soaking, but this what it was. People came together from all sides of the community to talk about a very serious issue, and I think we had some really good discussions. Some of those discussions included de-escalation, you know, and I think it's some understanding when the police arrive at these scenes, a lot is going on. They want to kind of preserve the scenes, and so part of it is that, you know, we talked about some de-escalation for some of the police officers training. But we talked a lot about that there needs to be some more mental health counseling and support in the entire community, more help for the unhoused in the community. We talked about support for the businesses in the downtown mall because without a strong business community, we won't have the resources to support these programs that we want. And so those were some of the things that I heard from that meeting, and that, you know, that we're going to continue to have these discussions. We need, another big part of it is that we need more options and opportunities for our youth in the community. We have a lot that's going on, but I know from working with youth in this community for the last 30 years, that you need, you know, that it's not one or two options that's going to address the kids, you know. Almost as for each kid, there's going to be different things. I just got an assignment today for my new mentee from Computer for Kids. And so that is my, another way that I can reach out to try to address, you know, that one, at least one youth, I know that, you know, I'm going to be with weekly, that we're going to meet. And I've been a big passionate person for mentoring for many years, because I know that, it's been my observation, that doing that, that that person, that young person has someone to turn to when things come up. So I thought it was real good discussion. I look forward to hearing these voices in the community. I'm fortunate that I, you know, with my profession, that I have a voice in working with the businesses and with individuals that are unhoused and working to move forward in the community. So I feel like that the post that we have on the community will help in our discussion, our deliberation, and ultimately what we pass and support here for the City of Charlottesville. So thank you for your leadership, for pulling it together.
Thank you. So our coordination with regional partners is very important. We had a conversation today with Chief Longo at the university and the Chief Operating Officer at the university, and we talked about things that we could do together and how we can share information and address the challenges, both in the city and on grounds and the university presence in the community. So we'll be following up on that, and I think that there's And I think that there's an opportunity for the city, the county, and the university law enforcement to join forces and approach this as a truly regional issue because crime waves don't know boundaries. That's what I always say. So you've got to work together and use your resources together in order to approach this. So we just wanted to share that with you tonight.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. So that's our report from the City Manager's office. We now come to our first full, by the way, thank you, Chief Dorrett. Also, didn't mean to ignore you there. Appreciate your paying attention to us and giving us the statistics. I will note for the benefit of anybody who didn't do the math that the 211 incidents up through October 23rd extrapolates to about 255 for the year. So still down from last year. So Community Matters, we have four pre-registered speakers, leaving 12 slots for additional speakers on Community Matters. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. We will now open the floor to our pre-registered speakers. Is our first speaker available? I have Emily Morrison. I've got, is she available?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Emily Morrison is joining via Zoom. Emily, you are on with counsel.
Can you hear me?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Emily Morrison. I live at 1500 Jamestown Drive. I'm the founder and executive director of The Front Porch, a nonprofit community music school and concert venue that serves 20,000 people per year. We're located downtown where we teach music lessons to 350 people every week of all ages. And then we also offer music programs to nearly 400 more people in the community every week through outreach. We partner with Head Start, the YMCA, JABA, the Boys and Girls Club, Hospice of the Piedmont, among many others, to bring programming to underserved Charlottesvilleans who need it most. We have made a lot of intentional choices to make sure that our programs are available and accessible to everyone in Charlottesville, regardless of their ability to pay. We treasure our place in the downtown mall neighborhood as we serve people of all ages and all backgrounds through music. I'm speaking to you today with respect to the ongoing security issues that we have been experiencing downtown, issues that have been increasing since we've gone back in person since the COVID shutdown, issues that you've spoken very eloquently on tonight. These include several security breaches in our building as well as numerous people loitering and sleeping on our property and people frequently using the bathroom on our property. I want to be clear, as you have spoken tonight, that these are very different issues. The loitering and bathroom problems are not the same as the security breaches. And to my untrained eyes, the security issues that we are dealing with tends to be associated with what looks like addiction and mental health problems. I want to also just incidentally express gratitude to the City Council for funding bathrooms in York Place, which will offer dignity to those who need to use the facilities. That is going to make a big difference to us. We are speaking, I'm speaking to you on behalf of my staff to make several specific requests. The first one is it would be great, we attended the meeting last week with the city manager and we're thinking that a moderator at big, important meetings and public conversations would be really helpful. Two, we're wondering if there's, if it's possible for the city to install some kind of an emergency alert system or just a way for us to more quickly and efficiently communicate with our neighbors in the downtown district. I'm currently on an email thread with other business owners, but it isn't comprehensive or timely. And I just wonder if it would be helpful for others to be able to communicate in a more nimble fashion. My staff, number three, would benefit from de-escalation trainings in the event of a conflict near our building so that we can know what to do in the event of an emergency. I imagine other businesses would benefit from that. Number four, we would like more information about what to do.
Your three minutes is up. Are you, can you?
Yep, I just want more information about how to handle non-emergency settings. And then I just would say that we concur with your feelings that more mental health and more, this is from Counselor Wade, that more mental health services are greatly needed. And then from our part, I'll just say, we would love to be able to support whatever creative solutions arise that may involve the arts and music and helping to bring our community together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Cox?
Hello. I'm glad to be here tonight. I want to give you a little bit of update on efforts to improve pedestrian safety on East High. But first, I want to thank you, Mayor Snook, Vice Mayor Wade, and Brennan Duncan, the traffic engineer, for walking with us down East High to experience the disaster that street is for people on foot. The city has a plan, Streets That Work 2016, that has a priority list of corridors that are to be improved. East High is hardly mentioned. And that's because the list is not about safety only. It's about a lot of other things. It's a politicized list. And public comment figures a lot in determining the criteria. So I would encourage you to take a look at the prioritization. I know that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is beginning to talk about this so that a more rational approach. I mean, there are streets on that list that are much, much better than East High. And East High is barely there. It's barely mentioned. Now, one of the things that needs to be done badly is curbs on that street. I don't know if you know this or not, but when it rains a lot, water gushes down East High, down Hazel Street. It goes, it has actually gone into the Jack and Jill. It's also undermining the foundation of Charlottesville Glass and Mirror, which has settled four inches over several decades because, an engineer verified this because of water, which would be diverted by a curb. The curb would also keep people from hopping up into the parking lots and cutting through as they have been doing and jeopardizing people's lives. And people are crazy. They do this even when I'm standing there. Last week, I ran out in front of a guy and stopped him, and he almost hit me. He kept on coming. He wouldn't stop. So curbs are a critical safety element. And I think the curbs can go down before the sidewalks, actually. I want to particularly take a little time to thank the Charlottesville Police Department for finding the guy who hit the cyclist at Hazel and East High. I really do appreciate that. I appreciate that he's been charged with a felony. And I hope this sends a message to others that you just got to be careful. Charlottesville is the kind of place, whether you like it or not, whether you have to watch out for pedestrians and cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next on our list is Fred Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt's here in the room.
Thank you for this time, council members. My name is Frederick Schmidt. I live at 312 Chestnuts Street in Belmont, about 800 feet from the proposed Carlton Development going forward. And I just have really a question here regarding the Resolution Number 18. It's kind of, there's been a word around our neighborhood, excuse me, that the city engineers, at least more than one, have not approved this critical slope waiver. And I wonder how we could go about getting copies, a copy of their reports, if any. Who would I talk to in City Office if that is true, what I know is true?
Yeah, I don't know, but I would, have you called the city engineer's office? If you're looking for engineers or?
Oh, my wife had a call in last week. She hasn't gotten a response yet. I think that's who she called.
Actually, I think that if you go to the Planning Commission agendas in October the 11th, I believe, was the meeting?
Yes.
And you download the packet online. I think it has all of that information within it. I don't know if you've looked at that yet.
Go online for?
Yeah, if you go to agendas, meeting minutes, on, at the top of the Charlottesville page, you'll see government and then a link down that says the agendas. And then go to the Planning Commission. And the October 11th meeting is where they have those details.
Yeah, so let's just get him a contact person instead of have him to do all that. Mr. Rogers, can you get him a name and number that he can reach out to, please, sir?
Yeah, that, Sam, who would you suggest that Mr. Schmidt talked to?
That would be Jack Dawson, city engineer. He's looking for those specific comments. Or James Breeze would be able to pull that information as a planning commission report.
Jack Dawson, city engineer. And Sir?
Thank you.
I will, Mr. Schmidt, if you give me your number, I will call you and give you that information so you don't have to look for it.
Uh huh.
Just write it down.
Now or after the meeting?
You can do it now and slide it to me. Not publicly. I'm not trying to publish such a telephone number.
Just write it down and hand it to her.
Right.
That I can still do.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Okay, so while he's taking care of that, our next speaker would be John Semelhak. Okay, he's here in the room. Mr. Semelhak?
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Snook. Councillors, City Manager Rogers, I'm John Semelhak, 1515 Chesapeake Street. I'm speaking on behalf of hundreds of people who want protected bike lanes along West Main Street. A petition started less than a month ago has collected 435 signatures, with many folks commenting on their desire for safer biking along West Main, including those who have been discouraged from biking by the unsafe conditions. Protected bike lanes have been installed in many places throughout the United States. What better place to start in Charlottesville than West Main Street? Protected bike lanes help meet climate goals by allowing more people to bike. They increase customer traffic to adjacent businesses. And most of all, they improve safety for both people biking and people driving. With the cancellation of the West Main Streetscape project, there are currently no significant improvements slated for the corridor. In the meantime, people continue to rely on this important connection to move from one part of town to another, making do with painted bike lanes that leave them vulnerable to both parked vehicles that encroach or block the lane and passing vehicles with distracted drivers looking for parking. We request that the city install a pilot project that involves repainting the road and installing a buffer for bike lanes consisting of flex posts and rubber curbs. Andy Orban shared a concept design with you to show that West Main has the necessary width to provide protected bike lanes while keeping street parking on alternating sides of the street throughout the corridor. West Main Street is a critical node of our bike network connecting UVA and downtown Charlottesville. The 2015 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan ranked protected bike lanes on West Main as the number two priority project for the entire city. It would be an ideal place for Charlottesville to demonstrate its first protected bike lane. Please pilot this much-needed project. And finally, please note that when I say "bike", I mean it as shorthand for all low-speed, small vehicles on wheels, including two, three, and four-wheeled scooters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Semelhak. So that is our final pre-registered speaker. To fill the remaining speaker slots, virtual attendees wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you've joined by phone and wish to speak during Community Matters, please press star nine. In-person attendees may raise your hand to be recognized. And we will alternate virtual with in-person back and forth. There will be an additional public comment section at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak who's not already spoken? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is James Groves, and I'm a city resident here this evening to highlight an opportunity for action that addresses climate change. Recently, the city staff published a well-written climate action plan in which they note that one-fifth of Charlottesville's greenhouse gas emissions originate from our municipal gas utility. As we pipe natural gas through our community and burn it for heating and cooking, we release methane and carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. Both are potent greenhouse gases. During the past year, our municipal gas utility experienced 56 leaks and expanded its customer base with 185 new gas lines. The leaks and expansion have occurred at the same time that thousands of the world's leading scientists urge us to rapidly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, not expand them. Fully addressing gas utility emissions will take time. And a city-funded study may be completed next summer that provides a roadmap for such efforts. Yet we don't need to wait before changing the trajectory of our gas emissions. The new climate action plan tells us where to start now. Quote, "Review the gas main extension policy for opportunities to align with climate action commitments," unquote. Having done that, I see a simple way to begin changing the trajectory of our emissions. Let's stop installing new gas lines for free as currently allowed in city code. During the past year, the city installed 127 gas lines for free, absorbing perhaps $2,000 in materials and labor costs with each such installation. That means that the city accelerated the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure and emissions with more than $1.25 million of subsidies. A change to city code would eliminate these subsidies, and any member of city council can initiate such code revision. My family and numerous friends would be most appreciative if you would quickly sponsor the revision that I provide to you now. A 2019 City Council Resolution asks that climate action be front-loaded sooner rather than later. Here is an opportunity to follow words with actions. Thank you. I'm happy to take any quick questions from council or staff.
Thank you, Mr. Groves. Any questions? Okay. So next, we would look to see if we have anybody online as we do our alternating things. Is there anybody online who would like to speak to us?
Yes, Mayor Snook. We have Kat Meyer.
All right.
Kat, you're on with counsel.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us, me, these three minutes. I'm talking about the critical slope waiver on the Carlton project, what Mr. Smith was referring to. So a couple of points. One, we were watching the planning session, and it was a bit disturbing to see that the city engineer was really had disagreements with a lot of the feasibility studies. And with the Planning Commission, there really weren't any technical questions. There was concern about affordable housing. But Missy very clearly said that has nothing to do with the waiver. And so what I'm asking the council is to really take a deep, deep look at the engineering and the details of this plan because it's very, very complicated, the watershed. You know, they said that they were impermeable. It was all asphalt. But there's a lot of green space. There's a huge ravine up there that is allowing water flow to move more naturally into Meat Creek and then beyond. So, you know, I'd really ask that you take a look at this, really talk to the engineer to see what his concerns are. This was like the fifth or sixth design that's been submitted. that's been submitted by this engineering firm, and they, Peacock Auto, they were even on their property. So there were a lot of flaws that we found, and we're not engineers, we're not architects, but we saw some errors in the design. So I really think this deserves a deep look at this. We know it's coming, and that's fine. We've worked with Ashley. She's come to us. She did present us, though, as though the neighbors did not want rentals, when in actuality, that's not the truth. We kind of opposed a PUD because we have two Section 8 houses on our street on Douglas Avenue. We love renters. They bring in diversity. So, you know, we just really want this to be a very successful development. And we love renters. It is, it's not an abandoned lot. There's fox, there's a tremendous amount of wildlife. So the carbon, you know, climate change is the only conversation we should be having. You know, the periphery, there's some older trees. Yes, landscapers call them trash trees, but if there's any way that we can really look at the green space, because there is no green space. There's one, it's for the septic in the center of the development, at least with the plans as they're submitting. And the last thing I want to say is, neighbors have not been talked about. I know my time is up, so I'll end with this. Like Holly Street, I was listening earlier on, by right, sharing those access, and we've just never been addressed as far as how are they going to begin this project. So thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. So is there anyone now in council chambers who would like to speak?
Two minutes, can I add one more?
I'm sorry, no. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. I know who you are, but I don't know if everybody else does.
I'm sorry for clapping. I was hit by a car several years ago down North Carolina on a detour, and no one was held responsible for it. They just pushed it aside. So I had to clap. I agree with y'all. But, okay, so.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm Elizabeth Marshall. I go by middle name Alex. I live on 619 Preston Place. I'm from here, born and raised, grandparents from here, family from here. I'm from here for a very long time. A lot of my issues that I'd love to touch on have to do with what Mr. Rogers pointed out, which I'm very optimistic about, is integrating and working with UVA, because I think UVA, as they grow, they are, they're growing, and Charlottesville is getting the brute of all of the growing pains. They're putting all, everything on Charlottesville, the housing, the extra trash, the way that students behave. And Charlottesville, we don't, that's really UVA's responsibility. They should, they need to take responsibility for their growth, and we need to work together. And instead, they're just putting it off on Charlottesville, and it's crumbling the whole city. And it's also teaching, teaching their students that it's okay, we're above the law, we do what we want, we trample on people. That's not a nice thing to be teaching these young kids, that their brains haven't even fully formed. And it starts from the top. So if the president of UVA and everyone up there gets to just kind of trample over Charlottesville citizens, then it teaches their students that's okay, and it's not okay. But first, real quick, I want to thank Mayor Snook, and I want to thank Officer Duquette and Officer Hubert, because I, on Preston Place, we've been having a huge issue with noise, trash, fraternities taking over. And I'm talking the, not the ones that you can go waddle down in your pajamas and say, hey, guys, my house is shaking, please turn your volume down. The guys that, when you do that and your house is physically shaking, they look at you and say, why do you live here? This is the fraternity street, which is not acceptable. I'm willing to negotiate and work with them. We're neighbors, we got to work together, but these guys don't care about anyone. But Mayor Snook was very kind. On his Friday evening, he actually came out himself to talk to one of the fraternities I've been having the biggest issue with, Theta Chi. And he came out there and stood out in the cold with me for an hour until the police officers came, and Officer Huber finally got them to close the party down. But today, I want to please talk to you about, basically, I want to beg you, please make Preston Place permanent parking 24/7. So because of the way that these fraternities have taken over, basically, anytime in the evening and all weekend long, all of the fraternity brothers and the girls they invite over that are not, that don't live on the same area of driving distance to town of these fraternities flock over, they drive their cars to the street, they leave them. It's not guests from out of town, it's fraternity boys that happen to live, not want to Uber, and they live over there. And they take their cars and they dump them on the streets. That means all weekend long, I can't drive my car, because if I come home, I don't have a place to park. If my mom wants to come over, she can't come over because she doesn't have a place to park. If I have friends in town, they can't come in town and stay with me because they don't have a place to park, even though I have a permit passed and I have these things. There's no spot for me because these fraternity kids from the other side of town who don't live here and who live on several blocks away, they've dumped their car there all week and long, sometimes longer than that. University Circle is now permanent parking 24/7, and Burnley Avenue is permanent parking set every day of the week, at least for some hours today. I'm basically begging you, please make Preston Place permanent parking 24/7, because we are getting the inflow of all of the parking from all these students.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you.
I should, I should say that that was the first fraternity party I've been to in about 45 years. Do we have anybody online who would like to address us?
Yes, Mayor Snook, Deborah Jackson will be next.
All right, Ms. Jackson.
You are on with council.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Jackson. I live in the Belmont Carlton neighborhood, and I'd like to thank the city staff who were involved in reviewing this critical slope waiver application for the Belmont condominiums. Their expert comments were thorough and insightful. I would also like to say that I welcome new neighbors to Belmont Carlton. I myself have not been here very long, and I recognize the developer's right to build on this property. I do have comments to make related to the city council vote tonight on this critical slope waiver. The points that I will make are related to the stormwater management systems that have been proposed. My comments come directly from the city staff report dated September 13, 2022. This is pertinent to the fact that Collins Engineering is requesting approval of the critical slope waiver prior to submitting a site plan. Of critical importance is the fact that city staff cannot, I quote directly from the report now, "cannot recommend approval under either finding number one or finding number two", and that city council shall consider the potential negative impacts of the disturbance and regrading of the critical slopes and of resulting new slopes and/or retaining walls. These comments come from the city's experts, people whose responsibility it is to review, comment, and recommend, or in this case, recommend against building proposals. I will also comment on the response letter from Collins Engineering to the June 9, 2022 city staff technical review of their critical slide, excuse me, critical slope waiver proposed plan. In particular, Collins Engineering has not reached out to the adjacent neighbors, with one exception, to discuss their plans, inquire about neighborhood concerns, or act in a manner which shows concern for the neighborhood. I have three points. My first point, it is impossible to review the critical slope waiver application without an approved site plan. The two go hand in hand, as the three stormwater management systems are dependent on the final site plan. This six-acre site is complex, and reviewing the waiver request without a site plan is indeed challenging. I quote from the city report, "It is challenging for city staff to provide insightful engineering concerns or comments without engineered plans at this stage." My second point, the release outlet dumps into a stream which does not appear to be filtered and which flows into the Ravanna River. Why is there a need for a release outlet? Why doesn't all the water go through the biofilter that they propose? Why does this outlet release water onto our adjacent property? Why is it not directed to the east towards the developer's property? Again, from the city staff report, "It is unlikely that there will be any substantial groundwater recharge to offset the reduction caused by the extensive grading and additional impervious. And at no time shall concentrated water be directed toward the critical slopes without adequate conveyance and down and beyond the slopes to an acceptable outfall." Without the site plan, how can you determine this? My third and last point.
Ms. Jackson, your time is up.
Will be required for this site will be monstrous, like the walls at a nearby shopping mall, not a neighborhood. Even if the walls are stepped back, they are 20 to 30 feet high. They will have a huge impact on the neighborhood, filling in the ravine, regrading the site, adding more impervious surface to the area. Not only will the walls be ugly, how will these walls be constructed without the use of heavy equipment on adjacent properties? Please vote no, and ask Collins Engineering and this developer to consider other options for this six-acre site. There must be better options than this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Anybody else in person here? Yes, ma'am.
Katrina Turner, Charlottesville. Last month, I read a story about a police officer from Woburn, Massachusetts. His name is John Donnelly. He not just attended the Unite the Right rally, but he also was security for Richard Spencer on that day. Five years later, this man was suspended from his job when the chief of police found out all the allegations against him. He wasn't just suspended, he then resigned from his job, and he was terminated from his job as a realtor. This is because he attended the Unite the Right rally in 2017. What was said and done in Charlottesville is a direct opposition to the core values of the Woburn Police Department, to serve all members of our community equally and treat them with dignity and respect. That came from the chief of police of the Woburn Police Department. Almost two years ago, an employee, Alan Groth, that works for the city of Charlottesville, attended the January 6th insurrection in Washington, DC. This employee, who was an IT analyst for the police department, fire department, sheriff's office, and rescue squad, was security for Alex Jones and Infowars alongside the Proud Boys and Enrique Torrio. He said he was honored, honored, to provide security for white supremacists on that day at the insurrection. This man also chased a black woman down 29 and brandished a firearm, as you know, because I've mentioned that before. Why is this behavior acceptable by you all to allow this man to keep his job? You don't have to have a reason to fire anyone in Charlottesville, because you know the chief of police was fired for what? And I'm going to continue to say that. What makes this man so special that he can attend an insurrection and not have any consequences for it? Just because the FBI did not charge him, does that, does not mean that you all should not do your job and fire this man. What are the core values of this city council? Is it to allow an employee who was honored, as I say, to secure white supremacists to continue to have a job working beside black and brown people? Is this y'all's core value? Is this how y'all want us to continue seeing you? If you haven't fired this man, I think you need to fire this man. Because if somebody from another city is firing their employees for what they did in Charlottesville, you all need to do the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to us?
Yes, Mayor Snook, Eugenio Shetini.
Could you spell your name, please?
Okay, hello? Oh, sorry. Hold on. We have reverberations here.
Uh, we've got a real, real problem there.
Can, I cannot hear you. Hold on.
You all need to do the same thing.
We've had this problem before. Have we ever identified what's going on when this?
Mayor Snook, Eugenio Shetini.
Yes, can you hear me now? Eugenio, E-U-G-E-N-I-O, S-C-H-E-T-T-I-N-I. And I live on Douglas Avenue. Hello?
We've got a, there's about a 30-second delay where it keeps repeating what, what was said 30 seconds earlier. I don't know, I know that there's some technical problem that causes it, and we've figured it out before, but I don't know what it is.
Yes, Mayor Snook, this issue cannot be resolved, unfortunately, with our equipment. It is on the end user.
Is there something that the end user can be doing that will solve the problem?
I think in most of these instances, it might have been either a loudspeaker too loud on their end, and they might want to use headphones, or they could try calling in via phone.
Okay. Is Mr. Shetini still on the line?
Yes. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. Now we got you.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I live on Douglas Avenue, and I am calling to oppose the vote for this waiver for the critical slope for Carlton Avenue. And I have three very distinct reasons for this. Reason number one, there has been no communications from the developer regarding easement or negotiations for access with adjacent property owners, and this was a written comment from the initial site plan review back in June by NDS. This critical slope waiver impacts adjacent property owners, and it's so critical that the property owners adjacent to this development be involved as to what's happening, because it will affect their quality of life tremendously. The second point is that this new stormwater management system relies in draining into an ancient culvert that is under the right-of-way of the railroad run by Buckingham Branch and the CSX. This culvert is usually overgrown with vegetation and debris from past rainstorms, and is never really ever maintained, and very rarely do we see anybody down there to clear this culvert. So we are very concerned that the culvert, as one of the key points to this stormwater management system, which is discharging into this system, has not really been vetted, and the maintenance of this system or this culvert has been kind of fallen by the wayside, and no one's really actually looked into it. So we're deeply concerned about that, too. And my third point is these retaining walls. As, these retaining walls are critical features to accomplish and satisfy the design requirements for the critical slope waiver for this new stormwater management facility, which is going to compensate for the critical slope, for the granting of the critical slope waiver. These walls range in height from five to 20 feet tall and encompass about three-quarters of the perimeter of the site. When you add the required three-foot-six-inch guardrail for safety reasons, because you don't want people tumbling down these walls and killing themselves, it becomes a very high feature, and it creates kind of an overall effect that we're concerned of a raised plateau and the appearance of a medieval fortification being plopped down in the heart of Belmont. This is not a very friendly or inclusive development, but it becomes a rather exclusive and a divisive plan. And we don't think it's very friendly, and there might be other ways where the developer can achieve his end means by not being so exclusive. So that's what I have to say. Thank you. I hope that came through.
Yes, it did. Thank you, Mr. Shetini. Glad we got it figured out. Okay, next, back to in-person. Anybody here wishing to speak? Nobody else in person? All right, anybody else online?
Mayor Snook, our next raised hand is Christine Palazzolo. Palazzolo, I assume. Christine, you're on with council.
And if you could identify yourself, spell your name, tell us where you live, please.
And you will need to unmute yourself.
We're not able to hear anything.
It appears she is still muted.
Ms. Palazzola, we're not getting you. If you're, you're apparently still, still muted.
It looks as though she might have just dropped out of the Zoom, so she may rejoin It looks as though she might have just dropped out of the Zoom, so she may rejoin us. We can go to the next individual here.
All right.
Jean Umacur Sibok, you are on with counsel.
Yes, good evening. Our city's climate action plan calls for reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, yet the city underwrites the growth of greenhouse gas emissions by providing free gas line installations and rebates to customers who convert to a tankless natural gas heater. I urge you to stop these subsidies so that the city can reach our climate goals and protect our citizens from the worst climate change disasters. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else online?
Yes, Mayor Snook, one additional raised hand, Kirk Bowers.
All right.
Kirk, you are on with counsel.
Good evening, honored council members. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to speak about natural gas. It's one of my favorite topics. I've spent a lot of time over the years in my profession as a professional engineer. Let me back up for a second. Again, this is Kirk Bowers. I live in Aldenmark County. I've lived here for over 35 years. I serve as the conservation chair for the Piedmont Group, Junior Chapter, Sierra Club. I speak unofficially this evening about the elimination and phasing out of natural gas in Charlottesville. I think it is time to consider a rapid phasing out of natural gas in Charlottesville. I was reading this evening some comments where it was noted that 56 leaks have occurred in the system the last year. And I just wrote, actually, a, a long document, Pipeline Hazers, Materials Safety Administration, talking about leakage in natural gas infrastructure. And actually, the leaks are some of the largest sources of natural gas crumbs, because it directly leaks methane into the atmosphere, which is 86 times more potent than CO2, greenhouse gas emissions. So, you know, I don't know how, how old the system is, but longer and the more age it gets, the more leaks will occur, and it's time to phase out the entire system. You're also spending about a quarter of a million dollars in subsidies to new gas lines in the city. I would take that money. I suggest taking that, those funds and offer rebates for buying electric appliances to replace the natural gas appliances. And that could be done very soon by eliminating rebate for gas and putting into a rebate for electric appliances. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, yes, this may seem like a wild idea, but actually, a year ago, I read another document for films concerning converting natural gas infrastructure to hydrogen, hydrogen infrastructure. We actually used hydrogen at the same time as natural gas over 100 years ago. It could be done, it just needs to be converted. And I was reading recently where UVA was under consideration for grant to study conversion to hydrogen from natural gas, and so I'm throwing that out as an idea. Anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate it. I hope you will focus on this issue, and I will, again, thank you for your, your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Actually, I say, anybody else in person? Okay, anybody else online?
I see one additional hand that is raised, and it's just a first name, Christine. It may be the individual from earlier. So try again. Christine, please state your full name. You are on with counsel.
Thank you. My name is Christine Palazzolo. I live on Douglas Avenue. Sorry for the technical fallop there. I'm following up with something that Deb Jackson brought up about paying attention to the experts on your staff. The engineers sent a 10-page report. On page four in the middle, they say we cannot recommend approval under either finding number one or finding number two. Please pay attention. Eventually, the homeowners' association will be responsible for the stormwater management system. It's very complex. It has to be done right. Please pay attention. Please deny this waiver request. Please ask the developers to take another look at it. And when the city engineers like what they see, then we will all feel like we have looked out for our future neighbors. We welcome our neighbors. We want it done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palazzolo. Anybody else online?
Mayor Snook, there are no additional hands.
All right, so we will close this Community Matters. That's our final speaker. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting, and we'll now move on to the action items portion of the agenda. First item is amendment to Chapter 12 of the city code to require fire inspection reports. Michael Thomas to present. Interim Fire Chief, Chief Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor Snook. Vice Mayor Wade, members of city council, good evening. Before you, is a request to amend city code, Chapter 12, local regulations. The request is to amend and reordain Chapter 12, Article 3, to require reports of the conditions of fire protection and other life safety systems to be submitted to the city's fire official and authorized the fire official to implement a mandatory web-based reporting system. The existing ordinance will remain intact, and we're requesting to amend the ordinance by adding Number 11 for testing and inspection reports. And amending this ordinance would bring fire department in alignment with 21st century processes. Our current system is paper-based and is inadequate, so we'll be moving to a web-based process, reporting system. The city's fire official, Battalion Chief Joe Phillips, and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Chief?
Uh, yes, thank you for this. Um, I guess just in general, I mean, it would help me to have some context. So, so for instance, my home has a number of fire detectors, smoke detectors in it. Am I supposed to be presenting documentation to you by paper right now? And I didn't know I was supposed to. Is that, is that the standard now? And then going forward, there'll be a web-based system to do that, or is it only for businesses, or is it? I did look through the ordinance, but I can't say that I scanned it closely enough to have all of those answers, so I would appreciate that.
Okay. Um, no, this is not for residential properties. This is mainly for businesses. Businesses right now that have like fire extinguishers, rain shed systems for the restaurants, and sprinkler systems are the main ones that we're focusing on.
Okay, so smoke detector, and smoke dampers and things like that, would that be included as well? Fire dampers?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so is this code that you're referring to, this is the state fire prevention code? Is that correct?
It's the International Fire Prevention Code, yes.
Okay, okay. And I guess, I'm, I do a little bit of this in my day job, but I'm not an expert. Can, can you help me understand how Charlottesville, you know, everyone from homeowners, you know, like myself, to business owners, how we sort of intersect with what the code is asking us to do? In other words, how is the code applicable to, um, to residents of the city versus, you know, businesses versus, is there, are there tables if I were to go look in, in the, in the international code, which would say, you know, for this size house, this is what's required, for this type business, this is what's required?
The Fire Prevention Code mainly focuses on businesses. Residential structures are not exempt from the code.
Okay.
There's a different process to address violations inside a residential structure. So in terms of, you mentioned fire extinguisher, I mean, fire alarm systems and outside detectors and things of that nature. We have programs in place where we would come in and inspect and replace those as needed, based on our supplies. In terms of businesses,
Okay.
It is required by code to have annual inspections of systems.
Got it.
So that's what we're focusing on with these web-based processes, because currently, when the contractors come in and inspect these systems, they mail them to us, email them to us, and some we don't get at all.
I see.
So we can't trust the reliability that the system's being maintained in accordance with the fire code, and it puts a lot of stress and delays on the fire marshals when they go out to do the inspections. So code compliance is mainly what we're after, and with our current system, we're getting paper inspection forms from the contractors, and we're having to store all of those paper forms for historical data, and that's why we want to move to the web-based system, so we can have a good standardized system to track and maintain systems for inspectors to, when they go out and inspect.
Got it. Thank you very much. So this isn't really changing the applicability, this, the applicability that preexisted before is what we'll, we'll go forward. This is essentially to come up with a recording system, a way of tracking this information that's much more reliable for you to keep up with and for, I guess, your contractors to engage with as well, it sounds like.
Correct, and it's just to standardize the process right now.
Got it.
And to reduce some of our storage, because we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of reports that we're receiving on a daily basis, and some we're not ever receiving. So it would be good to have a database, the click of a button, we can go on, look at it, and read over it, follow up as need be, and track our inspections that way.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Counselor McGill, any questions from the peanut gallery?
I was just gonna say thank you. I appreciate bringing this forward and, again, bringing things up to the 21st century. We should have, this should have been brought forward probably years ago, and I appreciate, I know Chief Smith was probably working on this before, and Chief Thomas, I really appreciate this kind of streamlining and saving us time and energy of our employees and our businesses and making things safer.
Yeah, Chief Smith and Battalion Chief Joe Phillips, they initiated this, and since me coming on, we wanted to formalize it and see if we can get it passed through so we can continue our forward progress to the 21st century.
Okay.
Do you entertain a motion?
Nobody else has any other questions? Fire away.
Okay, I move the ordinance to amend. Oh, it's two reasons.
Oh, that's right. So all we really need to do is agree that we're passing it on to the November 21st meeting.
So Brian just had all his questions answered. He was, he's ready to go.
I was ready.
All right.
I was really excited about this. I almost never get to say anything about building codes, ever, at my job. They're always, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, and this is a chance.
Let's go consent agenda.
Do it with one reading, but...
Can we put it on the consent agenda?
Yeah, put it on the consent agenda and take care of it next time around.
Great.
This is not something we need to deviate procedure for, so.
Right.
All right. Sounds like we got an agreement there. Next is the Human Rights Ordinance. Todd Niemeyer to present.
Good evening, Mayor Snook and council. Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, I did prepare a bit of a presentation tonight per the request of councillors and the mayor during our 221s last week, so if you'd like, I can share the screen if that would be helpful.
Please do.
Okay, I'll try to be brief with this. It'll be a pretty high-level overview, not a big detailed presentation, but let's see if this works. Bear with me while I do the screen share. Can you see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let's make sure I can control it from my end here. Basically, what I wanted to do is just give you a real quick overview by answering a few key questions. Let's see if we can get this rolling. Okay. So I had, during our 221s, I heard some, some basic questions about what the ordinance was, what, what is the function of the commission and the Office of Human Rights, especially maybe just reiterating that for the public as well? What are these changes that we're proposing to the ordinance and why? And then how will the work of, those changes affect the work of the commission and the office? And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So first of all, let's talk about the Human Rights Ordinance. So it was, became part of the city code in 2013, and this was born out of discussions through the Dialogue on Race. There was a task force for, around human rights, which formed this ordinance, the Human Rights Commission, and then the Office of Human Rights to address concerns of discrimination that happened in the city. The, the contents of the ordinance are based on federal and state human and civil rights law, so you can look those up if you want to know more about the origins of what you see in the ordinance. And what the ordinance does is it provides processes for us to address unlawful discrimination within the city. And when we talk about within the city, we're talking about the corporate borders of the city. So if you look at a map, you can kind of see where, where our limitations lie geographically. What the ordinance also does is it specifies the duties of the commission and the office, so it gives, it's kind of like the how-to manual, so to speak, for both the commission and the Office of Human Rights. Specifically, the Office of Human Rights is a, is a division of the city manager's office and has three main things that it does. We, we are the, and I'm the director of the Office of Human Rights, and one of our primary roles is to receive and address individual complaints of discrimination. And we get phone calls, text messages, walk-in visitors, emails. We receive those from the public and then attempt to address them with the tools that we have at our disposal per the ordinance. In addition to that, we do community outreach. We do community outreach around the services that we provide, helping people be aware of what they can expect from the office and how to connect with us. In addition, we do education and awareness around issues of discrimination, and also work with many community partners through collaboration and leadership to advance different projects that, that help protect human rights and basically make a more equitable community. The third role that we have is to support the Human Rights Commission, and we do that through administrative support and just providing guidance and institutional knowledge for, for the commission. So the commission itself is a, is a citizen-appointed body by city council, and it has several main roles, which are outlined in the Human Rights Ordinance as well. With regard to individual complaints that we receive through the office, the commission serves as, as an appellate body, so they can, they can hear appeals for, for any complaints that were dismissed, and they can also conduct public hearings when a complaint reaches its conclusion and there's a, there's a finding of reasonable cause or probable cause, in this case, as the ordinance currently reads. In addition, they can conduct community outreach on their own, or sometimes in partnership with us at the office. They review city policies and practices and advise council on human rights issues that they find within those. This one's in bold. Number four is, one of their tasks is to seek federal work share agreements with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and Fair Housing Office. The reason that one's in bold is because it's the, it's kind of the, the meat of what you'll see in terms of the changes to the Human Rights Ordinance that are before you this evening, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that entails coming up here. Number five, the, the commission also makes recommendations to city council regarding its annual legislative recommendations to the General Assembly, and finally, it makes recommendations to city council regarding its own policies and procedures. So getting into the, the point on the agenda here this evening is the, the changes that are proposed to the Human Rights Ordinance, and, and there's, there's four main things that I want to call your attention to. And, and for those who haven't checked out the agenda packet, that's where you'll find all the details. I'm not going to go through all the minute changes this evening, because it would take us a very long time to do so, but if you do, for members of the public and city council, in the agenda packet, there's a detailed memo outlining some, a summary of the changes, as well as the actual proposed changes to the ordinance that you can look through, and if anyone has questions, you can feel free to reach out to the office after, after this meeting. But primarily, there are four main things that I want to call your attention to. First of all, there's a lot of reorganization that happened within the ordinance. For a long time, we've, we've looked... time, we've, we've looked at certain, certain parts of it, and through, through practice over the years, we realized that by reorganizing certain key sections, we can make it a little bit more easy to read. We've added language to specify the role and the duties of the Office of Human Rights where there, where that was lacking before. We've subdivided the enforcement sections by protected activity, and that's a term of art to say, when we talk about discrimination, there are certain activities under the law that are protected. And I can just give you that real quick because that's not a big complicated thing to say. Those are employment, housing, public accommodation, which means access to spaces and, and services that are generally determined to be open to the public, credit, and then private education. So those are the five protected activities under law and under our ordinance. And then fourth, we added language to make the ordinance substantially equivalent to federal fair housing law. Again, that's bold because that is the biggest change to the ordinance that you'll look at tonight. And then there's a specific reason that we've done that, and we're going to go into that next. But here again, just a, a few answers as to the, the why regarding, regarding those changes. Again, number one, we want to make the ordinance easier to follow. Number two, we want to clarify how the Human Rights Commission and the Office of Human Rights work both together and independently. We subdivided, number three, we subdivided those, those enforcement sections so that we could make sure that the processes that are unique to each protected activity are separated out for easier reference. And then number four, that, that idea of making our ordinance substantially equivalent to federal fair housing law is part of the process of entering into what we call a federal, a fair housing assistance program, or a FAP. We'll talk, we'll call it that probably coming up here, a FAP workshare agreement with the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and Fair Housing Office. And we'll get into the meat of that because I think that is the thing I really want y'all to think about going forward because it has serious implications for, for the office and the commission. So what is a FAP? What is a fair housing assistance program? So it is a workshare agreement with HUD, the, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government, and their Fair Housing Office to address housing discrimination locally. And we can do that already under our ordinance. We can address housing complaints of housing discrimination. But when we enter that workshare with the federal government, what we, what we end up doing is we receive any complaints that originated within Charlottesville but were reported outward, either to the State Fair Housing Office, which is also a FAP, or the Federal Fair Housing Office. So those will be referred back to us to address locally. What that also comes with, so that's an additional responsibility, but the, the Federal Fair Housing Office will support us by providing training and guidance, funds for capacity building when we first start out in, in that workshare agreement. And we also get reimbursement for handling complaints of discrimination. And, and those reimbursement rates vary upon how the, how the complaint is resolved. Okay, this is probably the most involved slide that I'll put out there, but I wanted, I wanted to show you this in particular because this is a very, very general summary of how, what happens to a complaint once it's received by the office. The top set of bubbles there is what happens when we currently receive a complaint under the current ordinance. So when a complaint's received, we can handle that complaint by initiating an informal dialogue, a mediation, which is facilitated by a third-party mediator that we contract with, or if neither of those is successful, we can move to a formal investigation. If we move through a formal investigation, at the end of that investigation, there's an investigative report. And, and what will happen with that is the director reads the report and says, is, do I believe that there's, under the current ordinance, probable cause to believe there's a violation of our Human Rights Ordinance or no probable cause? If they, the determination is that there's no probable cause to believe the ordinance was violated, the complainant has the opportunity to appeal. Okay? And that's, I mentioned earlier, one of the rules of the Human Rights Commission as relates to complaints is that they're an appellate body. So the complainant has the opportunity to present what they would, why they disagree with that determination of no probable cause. The commission hears the complainant's position and decides whether to either uphold that determination or send it back to the director or investigator for further work. Now, if there is a determination of probable cause, there's one more opportunity. At any point during this complaint process, there's the opportunity to what we call resolve, resolve it through a conciliatory process. In this case, we, we're referring to mediation or informal dialogue. But at the point at which the, the investigation concludes, formal mediation is usually the path that, that, that parties will choose to, to pursue a settlement agreement. If they choose not to do that, then it goes to the commission for a vote as to whether or not to hold a public hearing. That is basically where our process stops because after the commission holds a public hearing, they can only, they can either recommend that they go back to mediation, or they can recommend to the city attorney that a civil action be filed on behalf of the aggrieved party. But they can only recommend that. They can't grant any relief. They can't grant monetary relief, injunctive relief, none of that. That's not within the power of the commission. So I, I share that as the current process. If the, the changes to this ordinance are passed to include language that is what I call substantially equivalent to federal fair housing law, and that's actually their, that's HUD's language, meaning that the language in the ordinance will be very similar, if not, well, in, in function and practice, similar or identical to federal fair housing law, then our process for housing complaints specifically will change. So again, we talk about, once we receive the complaint, there's the opportunity for mediation. The, the federal law doesn't complicate or contemplate informal dialogue, but it, it does talk about mediation or conciliation. Conciliation is a, is a different type of agreement in which the city itself would be a third party to any settlement agreement that comes out, whereas mediation is a, is just between the two parties that are the complainant and respondent. So that's a different type of resolution. If the, the issue can't be settled through mediation or conciliation, it moves to a formal investigation like it does currently, two things then change. One, the standard changes from probable cause above to reasonable cause because that's how federal law refers to the determinations in a case. Again, if there's a determination of no reasonable cause after an investigation, the complainant still has the opportunity to appeal with the Human Rights Commission. If there is a determination of reasonable cause, instead of it either going back to mediation or a, a public hearing by the commission, we do a new thing called issuing a charge. Once a charge is issued, it's basically a description of the violation, and it's a, it's a statement saying that a civil action will be filed by, in this case, the city attorney's office on behalf of the aggrieved person. Now, there's still an opportunity before that civil action is filed for both parties to mediate or conciliate, but there's also an opportunity within, within this new ordinance for either party to what they call elect. And that is, they can elect to resolve the matters through a civil action. And if either party chooses that or mediation or conciliation fail, then the city attorney will file an action on behalf of the aggrieved person in court. And that's a big deal because under our current ordinance, city, city attorney's not obligated to do that if there's a finding of probable cause. Under this new ordinance, if there's a finding of reasonable cause, that would be an obligation of the city attorney's office. So it's a big thing to contemplate. We've talked it over with the city attorney's office, but it's one thing I want you to be well aware of is in terms of how it changes the function of the office as well as, as impacts the city attorney's office. So we'll go, I'm gonna move on from that slide. We can certainly answer any questions about that if you have them. I'm sure that's a complex thing to digest, but wanted to share that with you. So let's just talk about next steps. So we've talked about this in 221s, and I recognize that this is a heavy thing to digest. I think even in the 221s, we caught a few typos and other things that we may want to consider addressing, which I really appreciate because I've been staring at this thing for so long that I can't see all those errors anymore. So I really appreciate the, the new eyes on that. So I don't think that, that's what we're contemplating tonight is, this is a first reading of this. So what, what we'll do is go back to the drawing board, fix any things that need fixing in this, and then present it again. But once it's approved by council, we can then submit this ordinance along with any additional required paperwork to HUD for consideration for the FAP workshare for the city. What HUD does is then they, they conduct a formal review of our application and our ordinance, and if we're approved, there is a, there's a period of interim certification, and they'll work with us to start building capacity to become a FAP and work in partnership with the HUD Fair Housing Office. So that is, in a, in a very much of a nutshell, what we're presenting tonight. And if you have any questions now, happy to talk with you about that. And then if anybody has questions after this meeting, feel free to reach out. That's the contact number for our office and our, and our email. And thanks for the time to share this with you. And I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen so we can talk a little bit easier.
Thank you, Mr. Niemeyer. Counselors have questions?
Sure. So, thank you for all this information. I guess, as I'm thinking about it, it seems like what's in front of us tonight relates exclusively to the changes that need to be made for us to submit that application to be FHAP. There's a larger conversation around, you know, I guess, over a year ago at this point, we made changes to the ordinance, and there's a discussion to be had around, do we want to make additional changes or revisit any of that? That, to me, seems like a separate conversation from this though, right?
That's true. I mean, you can consider them jointly. In the memo, I did try to outline some of the things that were changed in 2021 so that you could see, you could reconsider those because I know that those changes were made fairly quickly. There was a bit of discussion and uncertainty, both among Human Rights Commissioners as well as among counselors at the time. So it's a thing for you to consider. None of those, those sections have been amended, save for a few, I think, just grammatical tweaks. So that's, that's in there for you to consider. But yes, you're right. The primary thing to consider is these, are these sections that, that we would, we would call are substantially equivalent to federal fair housing law. And then, of course, the other amendments that were made, you know, were outlined in that, in that short bulleted list there. But they're mostly just refinements to our existing processes to clarify them and add a few additional details that we've learned through practice over the years.
Yeah. So for, for now, yeah, all I'm considering is that language related to what we need to submit to begin the process of becoming an FHAP. I think the other changes are something we could discuss a later date, and I'm not trying to minimize the importance of that conversation, but it seems a little separate. And I, I'll say for that FHAP piece of it, the language in this, to me, seems pretty straightforward. I don't see anything that I saw that was wrong with it or that I don't support. You know, the previous city council, I think, directed the, the Human Rights Commission, the Human Rights Office to pursue becoming an FHAP. That's something that I still support and that I still think is important to do. It'll just give us a little bit more teeth to investigate and make judgments against fair housing law violations in the city. So I don't have any issues with the, the text of what's been proposed to be amended. I guess, to me, the bigger questions are more the practical operational impact of this. I guess you would, if we, whenever we approve this, you would submit it, and it would be about a year until HUD approves it. And I also understand that we've made ARPA allocations in anticipation of this. I'm curious from, do you have any sense of with that ARPA allocation, do you feel like the city would need to be making more investments long-term, once this happens that we haven't yet incorporated into our budget? Because that, to me, is the biggest question. Not the text of this, but the practical operational needs if we're approved to be an FHAP.
Thanks. That's a great question. And yes, first of all, let's, let's address the ARPA allocation, which is tremendously helpful. So thank you for that because that will allow us to hire an intake counselor as well as an investigator. Right now, we're a, a two-person office, which I'm grateful to have a coworker. We also have two interns who have been with us since the middle of 2021, and we've, we've delegated so many tasks to them that, that normally a full-time staff person would be handling. So what we're doing with hiring that intake counselor and investigator at this point is, is just managing the current workload. And I think that, in addition to that, I think having that, that, specifically having the investigator on board will help us sort of separate out the day-to-day tasks that we, that we see with people coming into the office, asking questions, all of those other things, and managing the office generally. It'll separate that investigation piece out and make it much more of a, of an efficient process by having somebody just completely focused on that and not on any of the other things that we're doing. So what, what I do think that is important to consider is that the, the, the allocation basically funds those positions for a year. And so we're, we're in the middle of FY23 right now, right? So I'm working on starting that hiring process, especially for the intake counselor, very soon. Like, within the next month, I want to get that stuff finalized, get the position advertised, and begin the process of hiring. And then I would hope that shortly after we could proceed with hiring the investigator. I have several cases open right now that that person could, could actually take over. But, you know, I'm also anticipating when we enter into that, that FAP agreement, that we will probably see an increase in cases. I don't know exactly how many that will be, not really a way to predict exactly. But I, I think that, as you say, I don't know how long, if, if a year is actually how long it will take. But once we implement, once we pass the ordinance, the, the review to interim certification might not be as, 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 as slow as a year. I think that full certification may take longer because they want to test us out. As, as I understand it from talking with HUD representatives, they, they sort of test that FAP agency out, make sure that they have the capacity to launch into full certification. And so I think there's a, what I like about the process is it's sort of graduated. It's not suddenly you jump into the deep water. There's a little bit of a process there. So yes, I think you do need to think about, if we hire those, those two positions in, with the, the ARPA dollars in FY23, assuming at some point in FY24, they're gonna run out and there's no general fund allocation currently to keep those positions going, and then subsequently from there. We will get some. I think, in 2020, I think the numbers were around 120,000, up to $120,000 in capacity building funds from HUD, but that won't cover all the expenses for staff. It may sort of supplement that while we're trying to sort that out. But HUD definitely wants to see a commitment by the city to funding the, the positions long-term.
Yeah. So I guess, just practically, do you think with the ARPA allocations for the investigator and intake position, do you think that just initially would be sufficient to get through just that first kind of initial test phase of becoming an FHAP? And then through that, we would find out whether we will need to make investments in additional positions beyond that. And then, of course, no matter what, we're gonna need to plan for how we're gonna fund those two positions once the ARPA money runs out. And that's sort of what we have to figure out.
Yeah. To answer your question directly, yes, I do believe that, that initial allocation is enough to get us started. And, and again, it's, it's a little bit unknown, but, you know, that's why we work closely with HUD during that interim period to determine, are we, are we able to meet the need? Is there something that we need to do to streamline our efficiency, sort of things like that? But, but then also looking at what is the caseload that comes once we start receiving cases referred from the State Office of Fair Housing as well as the Federal Office of Fair Housing. But yeah, I do believe that with the addition of those two staff, we will, we will have significant capacity increase to, to handle that interim period.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have. And I will say again, I'm comfortable with the textual changes that have been made. They make sense to me as just being necessary to go forward with this process. I'm not saying it needs to happen, you know, right now, tonight, but I don't really see a whole lot of reason to delay it too much further if we're just focusing on what will allow you to go through with that FHAP application process because I do think that's something that is worth doing and we should stay committed to and not delay if our concerns are the operational side of it. But, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate all that. It helps me think through this. So in terms of these positions, has an application already been made relative to the next year's budget FY24, I guess? Or is that in process? In other words, you've got ARPA funds, it sounds like, but, okay, all right. I thought, I thought I'd heard that. And then the second thing is after our discussion the other day, and then looking through the ordinance, I, it makes sense to me what you're wanting to do, and I applaud y'all for taking the initiative to become an FHAP, and there's another designation you're, you're also pursuing as well, I think. The one question I had that came up in some of the conversations, and maybe you guys can help me here. So changes were made to this ordinance a year ago, is that right?
February 2021.
Yeah. What was the substance about that? What, what was that aimed at doing? And would we do something different there or?
I think that's a separate conversation, important to have, but someone else can answer that more thoroughly than I can in terms of what changes were made.
If you'd like, I can take a stab at giving you that.
Yes, please.
A little bit of that information.
I'm trying to figure out how I would summarize.
Yeah, there, there were some significant changes. Keep in mind that the General Assembly had passed the Values Act. I believe that was, oh, boy, was that July of 2020? I hope I'm not getting the year wrong. I believe so. Yeah, that would be correct, given the passage of the ordinance in February 2021. And the Values Act made some significant increases in protection for, under human rights and fair housing law in the state. And so, we wanted to make sure we incorporated those changes into the ordinance. And then, we made a few other small refinements to process. We're constantly learning a little bit more about, you know, how to codify the processes, especially the investigative and conciliatory processes that we have. So, that was the main gist of the changes that were proposed by the commission. And then, there were some additional changes that were also passed, more structural changes, I would say, for how the commission operates. And those are the ones that I said, I just put in the memo as, remember that these were also proposed in addition to the things that the commission suggested if you want to reconsider them. The commission did not, just to be clear, the commission did not propose going back to change any of those things, though at the time when those were passed, there was some discussion about, is this the best, are these the best changes for the future of the commission? So, I just make sure you're aware that that discussion happened. Counsel also, I think, talked a little bit about, are we ready for these changes? In the end, they decided to pass them. But again, take a look at them, but that was what, the basic summation of the changes that took place in February 2021.
Thank you for that.
Counselor McGill, you were really involved with that 2021 change. Anything you want to add?
I am happy with the stuff Todd's gotten there right now. I think, you know, I don't think there's, I think there is every reason to always make things living documents and seeing if changes are actually doing what we wanted them to be doing. If the changes are working or not working, or if they need more time, if they need tweaking. But I do think that's a further conversation at this time. I think it's good if we go ahead and pass this part, but be aware that we might want to be revisiting and looking at if these changes did what we wanted them to do.
The only comments I had concerning this, I think everyone has touched on what I, some of my, my primary comments. But I just want to note that as you're finalizing the, your, the report, Todd, that we, I know that it has to be some legal ease type of language in there, but it has to be accessible to, you know, you know, I think that, you know, try to aim for the fourth, fifth grade kind of comprehension level type of thing. If someone comes in or goes online, that they don't have to read, you know, 30, 40 pages and saying, this is what I need to do. Hope that makes sense because we want this to be, this ultimately be something that's accessible and available to the members of the community and not just, you know, that they feel like they have to get, you know, some type of representation, so.
Vice Mayor Wade, I really appreciate that. You know, that has been one of the things that the Human Rights Commission has also wanted to address. They actually passed a resolution that all of their resolutions going forward be written, what they call in plain language, just very, very straightforward, easy to understand, clear language. And I agree, the Human Rights Ordinance is not something you sit down and read for entertainment. It is dense. It has lots of references to code, and it has a lot of legal language, which in fact is required, and that's why it has to go through the city attorney's office before it even makes it, you know, to your agenda packet. But I also agree that I think one of the intents with getting this ordinance finished in its legal ease form is to then create a version that is plain language, like maybe a second document, a supplementary document that explains, what does this mean? What does this mean in practical terms? What does this mean for my life as a community member in Charlottesville? So, I really appreciate that, and I think that's a project we want to undertake once we get this solidified.
I could just add, I think, to sort of follow on Vice Mayor Wade's point, the part that most needs to be written at a fourth or fifth grade level is the part that says what you can't do. The procedures don't really have to be written at a fourth or fifth grade level because what you're, that, you only get to that if you've already screwed up. And at that point, you should, if you're a homeowner, if you're a renter, pardon me, landlord or something like that, or employer, you should probably be finding a lawyer anyway. But the part that really needs to be clear is the do's and don'ts. Let me say, one of the things that I know, when I talked with you, Mr. Niemeyer, a couple days ago, we were talking about sort of what your timeline is for what needs to happen and when it needs to happen. One of the things that we need to confront is if we're going to have any changes to the makeup of the Human Rights Commission, if, for example, we're going to add more members, the logical time for us to be doing that is February 28th or thereabouts because that's when all of the current terms expire. They're all set up to end on February 28th. And so, that's a position that we're going to end up advertising, I guess, December, probably. And we better figure out before we start advertising it, number one, are we advertising for more positions or are we not? Are we expanding? I mean, there's some discussion that we ought to expand the number of members, that having reduced it to nine last year was reducing it too far, and that that's a discussion that we ought to have. And again, if we're going to have it, we ought to have it in the next 30 days so that we can decide it and so that we can all move forward from there. I actually have very few issues, I mean, I should say, for the benefit of anybody else, I had about a 20-question list of things that I was asking you about last week, and we went through that, some of it in writing, some of it with comments from the city attorney, and I appreciated all of that. Some of them involve perhaps some things that we need to talk about just a little bit. And I will say here that I have a general feeling, after having been on council now for close to three years, that most of the time when we have made hasty decisions, when we have done something that we didn't fully vet, fully think through, fully edit, we've been dissatisfied with the results. And I'm not going to say that we've been perfect when we've had more time, but simply the times that we've kind of screwed things up have tended to be times when we just sort of pushed things through. And so, I, as a general matter, particularly with an ordinance of this complexity, I mean, you gave us not only a, what, a 25-page ordinance, but probably 65 more pages of documentation. And although I read it all last week and we talked about it last week, I still am not prepared to say that I've completely mastered it, and I would like to think that I might have something more to say if I, or more to think about if I had a little more time on it. So, I, that's the reason that I suggested to you and to other counselors that we, given that my list of questions came to you, I guess it probably came to you last Wednesday or Thursday, actually, because I didn't actually get to see the packet until Wednesday, when it was put out. For an ordinance of this complexity, for us to have had a chance to read it and get hit with it really for the first time, just basically two business days before we would be voting, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. That's why I suggested that we put this off, that we not plan on voting for it or against it, but mainly for it tonight, and that we make sure that we've really got all these questions answered. And not because I don't like the direction it's headed, I do, but I want to make sure that we're clear on what we're doing. And in particular, clear about, for example, the number of people we ought to have on the HRC. If we're going to change it, I think we ought to change it now, not pass one batch of changes and then come back next month and pass another batch of changes. So, I'm curious, does anybody else have any concerns about the size of the commission? Nine versus, I mean, it had been 15, and I think there was a general consensus that 15 is just too many people to have on a group like that. And there had been a recommendation that we reduce it to nine, and so, we did. And then, we got some flack from people who said, well, you shouldn't have reduced it that much. Curious whether other counselors have any sense of that, or for that matter, Mr. Niemeyer, whether you have a sense that the workload of the commission as it is now would be helped or hurt in some way by a change? Anybody have any thoughts?
I guess I could start. You know, I don't really have strong, two strong opinions on the size of it. I think clearly 15 was too many and kind of similar to our Housing Advisory Committee. We saw how if it just expands upward in size, it can kind of become non-functional because there's just too many people. To me, I mean, nine seems generally like a good number for a boarding commission, that it would be sufficient. I mean, it's an odd number. I think it generally just kind of works well of focusing the work. But I'll admit to, you know, I've attended a few Human Rights Commission meetings, but I have not attended all of them or followed it as closely as some other boards and commissions in terms of how closely I've attended every meeting and whatnot. So, I'm open to hearing from Todd or members of the Human Rights Commission, for that matter, if they feel like it's creating a problem in terms of having, being able to get together a quorum or the workload, especially given that the ordinance changes we made also requested that the HRC do additional work every year.
Yeah, I think that nine seems to be about the sweet spot after talking with Todd and others, but I think that it's important that the onboarding process, that, you know, we need to let members know about the importance of, you know, attending as many meetings as possible. And, you know, if there's no need to meet, don't meet, you know, if you just have one item and it can be, you know, because people, time is very important, so. But I think that that's important, working with nonprofits and being on boards and nonprofits for many years, I found that that's, that the onboarding process, as you're recruiting or we recruit or whomever, that just let them know that these are the requirements. That's what I usually take when I do that coffee or that lunch with someone, it's like, these are the expectations, can you fit it in your schedule type of thing, so.
So, it sounds like in February of 2021, there were some ancillary issues that were part of the conversation, and it sounds like the number of, the number of attendees was important and also just the general matter of boards and commissions in general, having, I guess, city council providing more clear guidelines for how we want our boards and commissions to operate. And I guess those sort of overlapped in that particular instance with respect to the HRC, sounds like. I'm fine with waiting two weeks or whatever we think is helpful. I have looked through the changes, and we had a good meeting with Todd the other day, last Thursday, and I'm comfortable with what's in the, with what is in the ordinance relative to, I guess, FHAP and FIPA, is that right? The two separate designations?
You're thinking of SACHA now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're talking about waiting and reviewing this again in two weeks.
Yeah, I'm definitely comfortable it not being tonight and it just being a few weeks. Just don't want to have it be indefinitely put off.
And let me say, part, if we had gotten a draft of this a week beforehand, or a week before we did, instead of just two business days so that we had at least six or seven business days, we could have got questions answered, we could have redrafted the provisions that seem a little odd and that kind of thing. Anyway.
Is there anything specific we need, we'd like for Mr. Niemeyer to respond to in the meantime or?
Well, he and Lisa Robertson both responded to my 20-some questions, and I'd have to go back through them to see, I don't think I have a sense that they've all been completely resolved. Let me put it that way. I think we're close.
What about the large, well, not larger, but the other issues about board size and whatever concerns were raised almost two years ago now?
I think that needs to sit down with some of the members of the HRC. I think that's going to be a much larger conversation to figure out. Mayor Stirk, I know you're working on something with law school students. Part, one of the things that was added to the ordinance in February was to kind of start mirroring what the PCOB was doing and to start bringing forward some more alignment amongst boards by having operational procedures. And the operational procedures could get changed on a regular basis as things changed around versus changing the ordinance all the time. There was this idea of tasking the Human Rights Commission with a project to look at and to investigate as kind of a direction from council of what is this, what are you reporting back to us as a commission? And that's also a larger picture on all of our boards and commissions, is what are we tasking these various boards and commissions with advising council to? What is, what are we asking them to bring to us? And so, I just, I think it might belong more in that, too.
I think that actually the HRC probably has in its ordinance, certainly does at the moment, has in its ordinance, a number of very specific directions of what we want or what we said we wanted in February of 2021 to have happen. The question, I suppose, since some of those things have not happened, some of the reason why it hasn't happened is that nobody in, nobody in the rest of government took it upon themselves, ourselves, for that matter, for council, to pay attention to the fact that we were supposed to be drafting operating procedures. We didn't, at the time that this happened, we did not have our deputy city manager for equity and inclusion and so on. That's somebody who might be expected to be the administrative sort of liaison or home, so to speak, for it all, but she wasn't here. And so, I think it just sort of dropped and nobody did anything with it. The question is, is that still a good project or a good goal to be expressing? And there was at least some thought in some of our discussions that I've had over the last week or so, that maybe, maybe that was probably overly ambitious. I don't know. But that's a discussion that I think we ought to have, too. Just to follow up on what Counsel McGill was saying, I have been talking with, or I started talking with, I really sort of set things in motion, and I haven't had much to do with it since, Professor Andy Blox, a clinic at the law school on giving assistance to local governments. And the task that they've got is to look at all of our boards and commissions and try to figure out what each board and commission needs in terms of, for example, is there a founding document? Is there some document that says someplace, this is what you're supposed to be doing? Here's how we want you to be doing it. It was surprising to me going through some of these things, nobody could seem to find whatever it was that created some of these, some of these organizations. Couldn't find the initial resolution, they weren't creatures of ordinance particularly. And so, the idea was to ask them to go through and figure, find out what we've got, take an inventory, and also figure out, you know, there's some basic things that every board and commission kind of ought to have, a basic set of bylaws, if you will, you know, agreement on when the terms start, when they end. Some of the boards and commissions had decided on their own, in violation of state law, that if somebody was appointed to the board and commission, that their appointment would continue indefinitely until they were replaced. Well, that's not actually what the state statute contemplates. So, there's some little things like that, that not out of any malice or evil will or anything, people anything, people have just gotten away from good practice. And so the purpose was to try to bring good practice to all our boards and commissions. As I say, the HRC actually has more guidance than just about any other organization we've got, just about any other board and commission, more guidance from city council. The real question is, is that good guidance from the city council? And I guess, Mr. Niemeyer, I don't know whether you'll be having a meeting with the Human Rights Commission in the next couple of weeks before we come back here, but if you could get some sense, even just, you know, sort of taking a poll of them, are there things on that list, the things that we've asked you all to be doing, that the commission just says, why are they asking us to do that? That doesn't make any sense at all. I mean, we haven't, we've heard from you, I don't know to what extent you've taken a poll of your members, but I think it would be very useful to get that feedback, too. So that, having said all that, anybody else have anything else they want to say? Or should we just basically table this until November 21st and take it back up then with whatever new drafts or anything else we may come up with? Does that make sense, folks?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll table it, and Mr. Niemeyer, see you in two weeks. I'm sure we'll be talking in the meantime. Thank you.
Sounds good. Have a good night.
Take care. Okay. Twenty of nine, anybody need a stretch or anything?
I'm good.
Okay, keep forging ahead. Alex Ikafuna for Mending the Community Development Block Grant, Substantial Action Plan. Mr. Ikafuna, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Fire away.
Good evening, councilors, mayor, city manager, and the community. What you have before you tonight, it's a substantial amendment of 2022 to 2023 action plan. It's about $178,394.34. HUD has approved for the city to make such an amendment following council approval. Staff will send the approval to HUD for final approval.
Mr. Ikafuna, I think you froze up on us.
Arc of Piedmont for replacement of 30-year-worn-out HVAC. And the second application was from the city's Department of Parks and Recreation. And the applications were reviewed and presented to the CDBG Task Force. They completed their review, amended their recommendations. Their recommendation went to the Planning Commission, which was approved, and recommended to city council for final approval. The proposed projects were for housing, the Arc of Piedmont, $6,739 for the replacement of 30-year-old HVAC at the Shamrock Group Home, and $171,655.34 for Parks and Recreation Department for the Pollock Branch Trail Bridge at Jordan Park. The project will provide pedestrian and bicycle trail, ADA accessible bridge to connect Jordan Park to the Developing Moss Creek Trail between Evan Street and Fifth Street. The request meets several provisions in the city council vision statement, the city's strategic plan, and recommendation in the 2021 comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of this substantial action plan amendment. That concludes my presentation. I believe somebody from Parks and Recreation, it's here, Chris, just in case the city council has some technical question related to the Jordan Trail.
Thank you. Councilors, have any questions?
Yes. I know in the past with CDBG, investments in physical infrastructure, pedestrian bike trail, a sidewalk, has created a ton of problems in terms of timeliness, which is one of the reasons we've been dinged from HUD. Is there any concern that money going to this bridge project would run up against any timeliness issues like the other kind of physical infrastructure we'd use CDBG money for?
I think that's a good question because that was actually the reason why we had to redo the ROFP to solicit shovel-ready project. So we are hoping that the timeliness issue will not be a case in this particular project.
And the only other question I have is, you know, the priorities listed are affordable housing, workforce development, micro enterprise assistance, access to quality childcare, homeowner rehabilitation, and down payment assistance. I'm just not seeing how a pedestrian bridge aligns with any of those priorities.
Public services and infrastructure improvement is still an eligible use of CDBG funds.
All right. Well, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I would just say I don't have any issues with the amendment for the Arc of the Piedmont. But I'm just, one, I have concerns about that there could be additional timeliness issues with that bridge. And two, I just don't see how it really aligns with kind of what our top priorities are for CDBG money, which to me is affordable housing and direct investment and kind of economic opportunities in these neighborhoods. I think those kind of projects, we should really be sticking to our CIP budget and money for bike pit infrastructure rather than using CDBG for it. So for that reason, I do not plan to vote in support of this tonight.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm wondering, Mr. Ikafuna, could you say a little more about the, I see in the packet, there's information from the meeting that occurred with the actual task force. Can you say a little more, I mean, to Councilor Payne's point, why that task force felt like this was an appropriate expenditure funds or the appropriate priority?
Initially, the fund was actually directed at a project in Reed Street. And that project was infrastructure, it was sidewalk, as a matter of fact. And because of timeliness issue and the certainty surrounding the ride-offway acquisition and what have you, staff recommended an amendment. And in the course of the amendment, I think council had issues because the amendment was actually going to a city department for a project. And council directed staff to do ROFP and solicit funding from the public. We followed the direction of the city council, completed the ROFP, we received the two applications, and the applications were reviewed by the task force. And task force approved the two project and recommended that to the city planning commission. Subsequently, the planning commission followed the review process, and we have firm recommendation from the task force. And the staff is essentially asking the city council for the final approval.
Was there any proposal that was sort of a competing proposal to the bridge idea?
The only proposal, it's, like I said, we received two proposals. One was the housing proposal for replacement of HVAC, and then the pedestrian trail bridge proposal.
So the, basically, the money that's being allocated is for the only two proposals that were submitted?
Exactly.
Okay. To the point that Mr. Payne was raising, if we for some reason did not approve the 172,000 or thereabouts for the bridge proposal, what would be done with that money?
What would be done with that money? We go back again and do a request for proposal. And the challenge of timeliness pending becomes a very serious issue because that was the reason why we had to do this. And a shovel-ready project was that trail bridge project.
So looking through the comments, it appears that one of the reasons for doing this particular project with this particular money at this particular time is that it, unlike most other projects, it would not require a lot of administrative approvals.
That's correct.
And so you don't have to wait through different processes. You can go ahead and basically just, you know, get it done through parks and rec on property the city already owns.
That's correct. In fact, the public notice soliciting a request for proposal clearly noted that in that public notice that we are soliciting for shovel-ready projects.
Okay. And shovel-ready in this sense means permitted?
Exactly.
Ready to go? Okay. All right. Any other questions, council?
That's one of the reasons I'm going to support it is because of the timing of it. And I think it's Erin, is used at a young lady that presents these type of things with us now.
Yeah.
And, yeah, yeah. And I know it's always like, and we had this discussion before, that we're, you know, we don't want to always be getting these things like, well, you know, it's, the deadline is here and this is what we can do. We want to be more forward-thinking, and I know we're getting to that point, so, but for right now, I don't know.
So what happens if we don't approve this?
He said that it has to go back to bid again or something.
Well, to put out for more requests for proposals.
Yeah, yeah. Not bid.
What happens relative to HUD, though?
Yeah, we have to consult with HUD. And we have to go back to the street to solicit for additional funding. I mean, to solicit for additional or new proposals. And in that case, the issue of timeliness pending is going to be a real issue for us.
Well, the first thing I would note is this is just for one of two readings, so we don't have to vote on it tonight. The second is, I would just say, my questions should not be interpreted as meaning that I think it's a lousy idea, a lousy project, but it does get to the question of whether for CDBG money in particular, which does have certain expectations in the community, should this be, should this money be spent in this way? I think it's a good project. Whether it ought to be CDBG money may be open to some question, but it seems to be the one thing that will allow us to get a good project done in a reasonable timeframe. And if we insist on rebidding the project, or reoffering the project, or reoffering the funds, I should say, we may not, may not get something.
I'm wondering if Deputy City Manager Sanders is available, if you have anything to offer or add to? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, I'd say to you all, just in your considerations are, remembering that we brought this item, these specific funds to you previously this year, when the fire department made a larger request that had gone through the process and been selected for approval. And at that time, we were given the task of not using the funds for what also is an eligible expenditure under CDBG guidelines, and put it back out for bid, put it out for RFP, I should say. The two responses that we received are the two responses that you have before you in this item. So we did that process. That actually took away time, counting against our timeliness ability with HUD. So at this moment, if we were not to approve this item, we would be further, basically eliminating our ability to use the time available to us, therefore putting us back into a crunch.
Okay. So this is already our second bite at the apple?
That is correct.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. So should we pass it on to the next?
Yeah, so it requires two readings?
Two readings.
Okay.
Do we want to have it on the consent agenda, or do we want to talk about it some more?
I plan to vote for it, given what I just heard, so.
Council McGill, what's your thinking?
Yeah, I'm, you know, this is the second round that's gone through here. I appreciate Councilor Payne's stance. But I do feel like it's kind of, again, if we wait, if we try to send this out for a third one, we don't know if we'll get a proposal that fits. We don't know if it'll be timely. And I know staff is working on a more, a revamped way of doing CDBG. It just takes time. And so I plan on voting for it.
So passing it on consent agenda, are you still?
No, I mean, I'm fine with it on the consent agenda. My vote, you know, is really be more, I would acknowledge more a protest vote, because I acknowledge where we are in this process, I do. But I continue to have a big question about how it is that our process continues to get us to the point where we have no other options. And it's not going to what's traditionally considered CDBG priorities. I would guess, and I've had conversations, that there were a lot of organizations that were interested in CDBG money. I don't know why it is they didn't apply. Maybe I'm wrong, and the issue is, you know, all the paperwork that you would need to comply with HUD, and that kind of keeps them away anyway. But.
Okay. So passed and put it on the consent agenda. Thank you all. Next, considering a critical slope waiver in Carlton Avenue, et cetera, project. Mr. Alfley?
I'm muted here, there. Hopefully everyone can hear me.
It would be helpful if you spoke up.
Is that better?
Little bit.
I'll get closer, even though I feel like I'm loitering over my giant head. Mayor, city council, tonight you'll be voting on a resolution granting a critical slope waiver for proposed development off Carlton Avenue in Garden Street, referred to as Belmont Condos. Belmont Carlton Holdings LLC, the owner, has submitted a critical slope waiver application prior to submitting a final site plan for a proposed mixed-use development on six acres of land with multiple parcels of tax map 57. All parcel numbers can be found in the city action memo and also the attached resolution. The proposed buyright development includes 130 residential units, 8,750 square feet of commercial space, new private streets, the reconfiguration of Holly Street, new city streets, connections to Spruce Street, and open spaces. The application, the application also includes 5% of the residential units will be affordable. This comes out to seven units, but it should be noted that nothing in the application materials indicates a level of affordability, timeframe, or enforcement mechanism. To construct a mixed-use development as presented in the application materials, the developer will need to disturb 86.4% of the critical slopes on site. Of that 86.4%, 65.3% requires a waiver from city council. The remaining percentage are exempt from the critical slope requirements under 341120B7C. On October 11th, 2022, the planning commission held a hybrid virtual in-person meeting related to this proposal. Although it was not a public hearing, seven members of the public spoke during matters to be presented by the public. They were concerned that a site plan had not been fully developed prior to submitting a critical slope waiver application. The negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, the positive and negative impacts the proposed street connection to Spruce Street could have, stormwater discharge, environmental concerns, and traffic concerns were all items brought up by the public. The planning commission heard a presentation from the applicant and a detailed overview of stormwater and ENS regulations from the city engineer. The planning commission stated they liked the revised plan as it related to street connectivity, stormwater treatment, which would be onsite, and the civic open space for the development and surrounding community. Planning Commission did not, did state they wish the affordable aspect of the proposal could be better defined and memorialized with a critical slope waiver. At the conclusion of their deliberations, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval to City Council. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer questions. In addition, the city's engineer, Jack Dawson, is also in attendance tonight. He is not a panelist and would need to be promoted if City Council wishes to ask him any questions. The applicant and their representative and their engineer are also in attendance tonight. They do not have a presentation, but they are happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I guess this would be a question to Mr. Dawson, but one of the things that was brought up in public comment is Public Works Engineering Department finding that they could not recommend approval under finding number one and two. And indeed, that's in the document. I know you kind of outlined it in the, in the Planning Commission packet, but just for the benefit of the public and us on council, could you walk through some of the reasons that you found you could not justify approval?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Jack Dawson, the city engineer. I do not recommend approval because this is a, as some of the comments reference with this coming before site plan approval, as these typically do, a lot of times they accompany some other discretionary zoning, whether it's a planned unit development or what have you. And so, when I review the applications, I just review them for the provisions of the code, which references specifically environmental conditions, pretty much. It's, you know, they're listed in city code as erosion affecting the structural integrity of this feature, stormwater, stormwater and erosion-related impacts, the groundwater. Those are all specifically listed in codes as things that we're supposed to consider when making the recommendations or given conditions. And so, to me, there's also the two findings that it's supposed to address. So, to me, either finding two, which is addresses sort of unfair restriction on use of the property, or condition one, which specifically is supposed to address how this project's being treated to address those provisions, doesn't influence me as engineer who mostly aways these, the environmental impacts here, to say that I would recommend to the NDS Director and Planning Commission, approve. But that's where that comes from. So, my report is very technical, addressing the very technical requirements that the applicant put forward, because that's what our application for the critical waiver addresses. My primary concern was with groundwater recharge, which honestly, for a city that's in a, in a site that has deep slopes like this, probably isn't the most relevant issue with stormwater. And then the other important thing to note here is that the conditions, as I believe was passed to you all in City Council from Planning Commission, did include 125% onsite water quality treatment, which is a good thing, both above and beyond the state requirements and our ability and the typical nature of folks of providing stormwater onsite. So, I don't dislike the project in whole. I just didn't feel that the way that this process works, I personally could advise as city engineering, based on the application materials, that I would recommend approval of the project.
Understood. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. I guess, just some thoughts I have is, you know, my understanding is, this is being proposed as a byright project. It disturbs critical slopes. This is the only point in the process that the Planning Commissioner, we would weigh in. I'll say the one concern I have is a broader concern that we're running into, but it's this project is the affordable housing component of it. And my read is the critical slope waiver is we're determining whether the public benefit for disturbing the slopes is worth the disturbance. The Office's Community Solutions has contributed to this report. To my mind, affordable housing is one component of us deciding what it would be. And what makes me, the concern I have is that we have the inclusionary zoning ordinance underway. And so what they're proposing is seven units at 80% AMI for 10 years, whereas under our inclusionary zoning ordinance, that would be 13 units at 60% AMI for, I believe, 99 years. And that's the concern I have, and I don't know what we make of it or do with it, but it's the broader concern that I think we're going to see a lot of applications come before us, either because they were already in the pipeline, or in some cases, because developers see that we have zoning changes underway and they kind of want to get it in under the deadline before inclusionary zoning, or a zoning change more broadly takes effect. And I'm just not sure how we're going to deal with that, because we could kind of say, ah, well, it's coming, but that could easily be a year, worst-case scenario, even longer than that. And we're going to miss out on a lot of affordable housing and some pretty big developments. And this would seem to be one of them. Again, in terms of number of units, about half what we would get in the AMI level and length of affordability dramatically different. And that, that's what's making me wonder if, you know, I'm at a point where I feel like the public benefit outweighs the real cost of disturbing this level of critical slopes on that site. But I certainly think there is absolutely something that could be built there that would, you know, kind of pass that test.
Yeah, if I could just piggyback off that. So, stepping back just a second, Mr. Dawson, so your assessment, your analysis is basically, you're making it on the basis of what's been submitted to you, not on the basis of a future site plan that might alleviate those concerns, right? Am I, am I understanding your sort of position?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I think that's.
I guess my point is that, I mean, putting on the hat of the applicant, I'm assuming, I'm not assuming, I know that there's a set of codes and rules and standards, regulations that they're going to have to meet at some level before they could get a site plan approved. So, the point that people have been making, which I can appreciate, that, you know, the city engineers ruled on two findings that they didn't pass muster, that's at this point in the process, assuming we got through this point in the process, assuming we get through this point in the process, the applicant is going to have to put something before you that's acceptable by code. And then when it's being built, they're going to have to follow the stormwater regulations. Am I tracking correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, so my question, this is just stepping back a second to make sure I understand. So, this is a byright development, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So, and what I, I did check in with the Chair of the Planning Commission this morning, and what he indicated was that if we don't approve the critical slope waiver, then the applicant would, could, if they chose to build this as two separate projects? Byright projects?
Well, the use is byright, the property could be developed byright without impacting critical slopes.
Okay. So, in other words, our granting a critical slope waiver presumably will produce for the applicant a more efficient, effective overall project. Is that reasonable to say?
I would say so. I would say that the way they want to develop it as proposed needs the critical slope. It's not to say that if they, if the City Council denies the critical slope, there is still, the property still could be developed in a different configuration without impacting critical slopes.
But would likely have fewer units or something like that?
Could. The parameters could be different. You could probably not have a connection to Spruce. It'd probably be more of an internal development.
Okay. Yeah, and so I would be interested with the applicant, just, you know, if you're willing to have a conversation about your thoughts on that regard, and also with respect to what Counselor Payne mentioned, you know, this is something we could choose to do or choose not to do. What might this, what might potential benefits be to the city if, if we were to grant this waiver versus not? I mean, are there ways we can, because you heard the, you know, you heard the feedback from the community earlier. It doesn't sound like people are really upset about the project per se. They are concerned about some of the structural features of it, but I do think the community has some interest in wanting to know, you know, what are, what are they getting out of this condition?
Could I interpose one thing? I had, during the meeting, I emailed to a number of folks, including James Fries, NDS Director, basically saying, we're hearing that this project was, was being opposed by the engineering department, and I couldn't find the report. I was trying to get it online, and for whatever reason, I wasn't able to download it. And Mr. Fries responded, "Note, the comment from engineering is not a recommendation of denial."
Sure. That's right.
"The language that has been quoted is effectively a boilerplate comment made on each critical slope review, based in part on the fact that a project at this stage of discretionary review will not generally have all of the info necessary for a full engineering review. Jack is available in the meeting tonight if you have questions. His recommendation goes on to provide the conditions he recommends placing on approval of the waiver." He goes on to say, "By the way, the staff is recommending significant changes to the critical slope section of the zoning ordinance with the goal of preserving the outcome, but removing this process," where I gather the problem is, we're being, I mean, it's sort of like, we're being asked to approve the site, the site plan on the condition that they submit a site plan.
Which is, which is what he was saying earlier.
But I, I think we need to take with a grain of salt the statement from some of the folks in the public that, that this is a, you know, full-fledged recommendation of denial.
Right.
But anyway, you had questions for the applicant in particular?
Yeah, I didn't know if we had other things we wanted to say amongst ourselves before the applicant stepped up, or?
I think you posed a great question.
Okay. I don't know if Sina had anything, questions?
No, no, I just, this, I still don't know quite why we make votes on critical slopes. This is a very technical area that should be being handled by experts on this, not by me, who knows nothing about engineering. So, just, no.
Talk to us.
Good evening, City Council. And Mayor, my name's Ashley Davies. I'm with Riverbend Development. And tonight, I am joined by Scott Collins, our engineer, and he is happy to delve into the technical side of our application. But I just wanted to make clear a couple of points, because everything that you all are bringing up in this forum and everything that the public brought up as well, they're all great points. And that's exactly why the Director of NDS is telling us that, you know, they want to fully revamp this process. I've been through many critical slopes waivers in both the city and the county, and I think for every single city critical slopes waiver, it's been this exact same situation. It's like a catch-22 for all of us. And the great news is, we have excellent stormwater regulations through the state. We have very capable staff members that review our site plans along the way. And from the applicant's side, we don't have any choice but to go ahead, you know, we're following the process that's outlined by the city in terms of, we've submitted a site plan that's been reviewed by the city. Now we're in the critical slopes waiver process, and then we will continue on with the site plan process. But there is no way to go ahead and get your final site plan approved in advance of a critical slopes waiver. So, that's kind of where we are this evening. But also in terms of our process and our work with the community, we have owned this property for about 15 years. And over the course of that time, we have worked through just about every permutation on how to design the property. I've had many, many meetings with neighbors over the years, looking at a variety of very dense and tall developments, and then some that are more scaled back. And we've gotten so many, so many comments along the way. And what you have before you tonight is really what we think is an optimal combination of providing a lot of new housing that's close to the downtown mall. It's 130 new units, a variety of unit types. We've got apartments, townhouses, two-over-ones. We've got a really great connected street network. We've got an amazing community space right in the middle. It's about a half acre that's open as a civic amenity to the public. And we're also, as a byright project, we are putting forth affordable housing, which is very unusual. I don't know of other byright projects that are, you know, making that assertion. And we very much believe in affordable housing. We work on affordable housing projects all around the city and provide affordable housing in the county as well. So that's something that's important to us. We have, in that process, and you'll see in the staff report, there have been some issues in how do we codify that affordable housing, because it's not something that's typically offered with a byright project. And so I think that's been a little bit of our issue, but, you know, we're very happy to include that in the project, but we, we don't think that that's the only community benefit. We think that if you look at the overall project, it offers many community benefits, and those are all, in addition to just looking at the very technical elements of the stormwater and the critical slopes and the environment that's there, which is, you know, primarily what's under consideration with the critical slopes waiver. So if you look at the existing conditions, and I don't know how many of you have been on that site, but it's very.
Yeah, I went out there today. It is a mess.
It's a mess. It's, you know, kind of an industrial wasteland that was, at some point in time, the critical slopes that you do see on site are man-made for when they kind of created those pad sites for some of those existing industrial uses. It is mainly impervious, there's a lot of invasives. And so, really, if you look at our engineer's plan for the site, it's, it's highly unusual. I don't think this was really highlighted enough that for an urban project, what most people do is just go ahead and buy nutrient credits and a nutrient bank. So they don't have to deal with stormwater quality within the city of Charlottesville at all. They're handling quantity, but not quality. And I think a really unique aspect of this project is that we are, we're not buying any nutrient credits, we're fully handling the water quality onsite, not only to 100% of that, but, like we said, 125%. So even going above and beyond that. So, and the, you know, the stormwater that's flowing through the site right now is a huge problem. It's capturing the water from the northern half of that whole neighborhood, and it's a real mess right now. So, this is, you know, one of the cases that actually being able to engineer the site and add the features that Mr. Collins has put in the design, we're actually creating a better situation than exists today. And I don't know if you wanted to add any other technical elements, but we are, you know, we're more than happy to continue talking with the city if there are like elements of the affordability. We did, in between the Planning Commission and City Council, really try to work with staff to figure out what was a way that we could create an actual document or agreement to, you know, more solidify that commitment from us. And it was determined that there was no, like, direct agreement that we could create with the city. So, but, you know, if there are questions or ideas or, you know, more information that you want on that, but I hope that gives you a good overview of what we've tried to accomplish here.
I did have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Great.
And I'm just asking this because I'm trying to map out the possibilities. So, if, for instance, we were to say no to the critical slopes waiver, y'all could still build something there, it just would be more of a hodgepodge or something? something there, it just would be more of a hodgepodge or something?
Exactly, so, actually, there's an example of that, our previous site plan, the one just before this, we did a previous review, trying to do just that, it was a buyright development that did not impact the critical slopes, so you ended up with a couple of, I guess, larger apartment buildings around the site, because, as you know, in Charlottesville, any property that's left that's undeveloped, there's a reason, there are challenges that we face, but we also have, you know, these goals and desires to provide housing and commercial opportunities in our community, so I think it really, it boils down to a couple of things, you know, do we want to create new housing in Charlottesville, and how do we want to do it? So, yes, we've looked at other layouts that did kind of just barely stay off the critical slopes, but they totally ignore, we got so much pushback from both the neighborhood, from city councilors at the time, from staff, like, people did not like that design at all, and what we've worked through now, I think, you know, it's great urban form, it follows the comprehensive plan, and that the building forms themselves are slightly smaller, so they fit in with kind of what you're going to see throughout the neighborhood, it's a nice blend into what exists all around it, you've got a really nice street network that connects in, and you've got great urban civic space there, as well as commercial frontage along Carlton Avenue, so it's not really just staying off those man-made slopes that are full of invasives, it's like, what is the best form to put there? So how can we kind of get all of this feedback and work it into the best project possible?
And just, sorry to interject, but, so, that previous project that didn't disturb the critical slopes, that had more units and had less impervious surfaces, correct? Or was that the one-
Same number of units.
So the more units is the one that required the SUP?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interject.
No, it's okay. Would this, if you had to guess, Michael, would this sort of be like an MIR-type density we're talking about here?
I mean, I think in either case, yeah, I mean-
I mean, in other words, if we're trying to put it into the new world of the new comp plan, what would you say, Ashley, is that sort of that-
Did you say MIR?
Yeah, medium intensity.
About 20 units per acre, 22 units per acre.
Yeah, it's right at the 21 DUI is what you can do for this district.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think in terms of the comp plan. I had another question. This is a silly one, I was there looking, this big ravine almost on the backside, full of kudzu, where does that water go to? Someone mentioned a box culvert under the, yeah?
Under the railroad tracks.
And then does it, is it undergrounded there to the river, or, because I've been looking on the map, trying to figure out where this-
It all goes downhill.
Yeah, I figured that part.
Thanks, my name's Scott Collins, the drainage goes, yes, goes underneath railroad tracks, goes underneath the coal tower property that was just developed, and then it gets into a storm sewer system at that point.
Got it.
And then flows down ultimately to Ravanna, so.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, a lot of my questions been answered, I guess, what, it sounds like for this property, Ashley, that before you, you all really listened to the residents' concern and didn't do the project as proposed in the past, what efforts did y'all make this time to try to address the community comments that we have been hearing?
Sure, so, like I said, some of the design is addressing previous comments, and then, as we were preparing to submit the initial site plan, I did have in-person meetings with many of the adjacent community members, we did, also did a Zoom meeting with the whole neighborhood association, but definitely had in-person meetings with folks that were living all around the sites, the people that you heard from tonight, we walked the area, and a lot of what we have been focused on, knowing that the design does require, there is like, you do have to raise the site somewhat, just because of the nature of the sewer flow, so the engineering from the homes does require that the grade come up a little bit, so what we were really looking at is kind of twofold, how do we have a really great landscaping plan, like, what are the ways that we can mitigate the impact, knowing that this development is going to occur, it's going to have like some grade change, so you've got both the walls that are, that need to go in, but also the landscaping, so we talked about, yeah, how do we really buffer with the type of landscaping that's going to be what those neighbors want to look at for the next couple of decades, and really kind of soften through that, but we also were able, through our most recent design, to pull that grade differential down. It was actually much higher in the site plan that they have seen that went into the city, so I think there's a little bit of a feedback loop that will catch up with our next site plan submission, because in the initial site plan submission, those grades were higher, the walls were higher, they looked a little bit, you know, more scary from that perspective, so our engineering team was able to pull that down significantly, so the walls are both shorter, and we don't need as many of them, and in the cases where they might need to be slightly taller in certain areas, we've been sure to step them down and do a bunch of landscaping to make sure that that's really buffered.
So, that was one of the concerns, of course, the main, the primary concerns we have received, at least I have, is the waiver, but some of the comments that you all received was concerning the wall?
Yes, is there anything that you heard that I haven't addressed yet?
No, no, I mean, you certainly, you know, would hear a lot more in those kind of one-on-one or the Zoom meetings than, than we probably would, we just hear, at least what I found, the major things type, so, thank you.
Sure.
One of the folks had complained specifically that there were no negotiations with the neighbors about the conditions of the critical slope waiver.
So, conditions that go on a critical slope waiver, those are put on by Mr. Dawson and the city, so we are not able to negotiate those conditions with the city or anyone else. What we, the work we've done with the community has been around our design features within the site plan and what we can actually impact, so I'm not sure how we would negotiate those conditions, since we don't have control over them.
Okay, so, the letter that I've got here, or the report from NDS, has listed six separate conditions, and I don't see, and maybe I'm just not looking in the right place, trying to see whether the conditions that are in that report show up in the conditions, show up in the resolution. I see, okay, oh yeah, there are six conditions, those six conditions in our draft resolution are the same conditions that were recommended by the Planning Commission, which were the same as were recommended by NDS, is that right?
I think specifically by Mr. Dawson, sir, yes.
Yeah, so, I guess, the question kind of comes back to, to putting Mr. Dawson on the spot, and trying to get some reconciliation between what Mr. Fries has suggested was boilerplate language, saying, we recommend, I gather, I haven't seen the actual original document, but it seems like it was, we recommend denial unless the following conditions are met, or is it, we recommend denial, but if you really have to go ahead with it, please impose these six conditions. Mr. Dawson, is it fair to ask you which of those two is more nearly your opinion?
Yeah, sure, to be clear, I, I'm not recommending denial of the project. I, as essentially an environmental engineer at this point, can't recommend approval of the project, I have no way to weigh density against the displacement of environmental features, so if, it's obviously well within your judgment, Planning Commission afforded to you for approval, to approve it, I wouldn't say, man, that was a horrible mistake because of the following reasons. I wouldn't describe it as boilerplate, what I produced or what my division produced, but, so I did not recommend denial, I just, from the perspective essentially of weighing the environmental considerations, I couldn't recommend approving just on the environmental benefits. That being said, on-site water quality treatment is good, treating more than what's required on-site is good, so I wouldn't have any qualms with counsel approving this, I wouldn't say, man, what a loss for the environment or anything like that, absent a more rigorous process, I'm not even sure, honestly, if you're supposed to be evaluating the benefit of the density in low-income housing against, that's not within my purview, honestly, so I'm specifically coming from that, you know, I'm not recommending that you do not, I just, and the conditions, you know, are to serve protecting the intent of the stability of the slopes, and as Counselor Pinkston said, we enforce state code on all the projects, of course, we enforce that on all the projects, whether they require a critical slope waiver or not, so we do try and look at these to the code in that regard, but I don't want to, I'm not recommending denial, and I apologize if that was what I was doing, I'm just not recommending approval, but.
So, if we, if we were to approve subject to these six conditions, do you feel reasonably confident that when things come back through the planning department, through NDS, for site plan review, that the combination of that additional site, the expected site plan review with those six conditions, you're going to be able to make sure that, that the basic environmental concerns behind the critical slope waiver ordinance are able to be met? I know that's an odd formulation of my sentence, and I apologize.
Yeah, I certainly agree with the spirit of that, yes.
That's very generous.
Bottom line is, he's going to see a site plan, and he can't approve it unless it's up to-
Well, obviously, if you've got a site plan, and you have some control as an engineer about what things you are willing to say, yes, this complies with the site plan, and yes, this complies with the conditions that council has put, if these conditions are adequate conditions, and then you ought to be able to use the site plan to enforce those conditions, and to make sure that the end result is compatible with a good environmental result. Is that fair to say, Mr. Dawson?
That is fair, yes.
Okay, I said it a little more articulately the second time, okay.
I'm happy to move the ordinance.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Just some-
Let's have some discussion.
Yeah, on the discussion point, again, you know, I think, I think there are clear benefits to this project, I think if we could find a way to have something built there, actually, you know, I attended the site plan conference, I was upset we didn't go with the SUP proposal that had more units, and I'm still there, but again, my concern is, to get back to the discussion we had at that joint session with the Planning Commission, there are benefits to this, but there's zero things in this proposal that, just to make it concrete, will benefit a single parent who works full-time making $15 an hour. The whole reason we're doing inclusionary zoning is because it would have something that benefits those families. We're missing out on 13 of those units. If this project met our draft inclusionary zoning proposal, I think the benefits would outweigh the environmental costs and impacts, right now, I don't think it does, so I don't plan to vote for it, and more broadly, not about this specific project, but I really think we've got to figure out what's going to happen over the next year-plus with inclusionary zoning, because there's really not that many proposals that are going to have over 100 units, and we're also creating an incentive for every single developer to get in large projects before we adopt inclusionary zoning, and we are literally going to miss out on dozens and dozens of actual units that would actually benefit that single parent working full-time at $15 an hour, and it's not a question I expect to be answered now or tonight, but I wonder if we should look at adopting some kind of inclusionary zoning before even we make zoning changes, to prevent this kind of disincentive to not match the program, otherwise, again, I mean, we're, just because of timing issues, we're going to miss out on dozens of units, and-
Rush to get in ahead of the deadline.
And, again, if we, I understand all the discussion, but tonight, if we approve this, we will miss out on 13 of those units.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, the hypothetical you're comparing to, I, maybe, I mean, yeah, if we could have done the SUP, for sure, that would have been a better project, but at this point, you know, I feel like this, this project, it sounds like it's been going on for a very long time, so.
And I would say, I suspect that this project, when completed, will have some effects that may be surprising to other people. One of those effects, I'll just say, we have a couple of houses in my neighborhood in Greenbrier that were sold to people who would much rather have had a place that was walkable to downtown, and that that's the part of the housing market right now that is really, there's a need to be filled there, and you all are trying to fill it, and I applaud that, I'm sure you will make a boatload of money doing it, and that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, and I love tax revenue, so, but, but you know, the, one of the consequences has been that because people haven't been able to find the unit that they want, they end up buying a unit that they don't really want, I've got, you know, we have two houses in our neighborhood, we're blocked from Greenbrier School, and they're bought by two families who have no children, and because they couldn't find what they wanted, and I just think the more variety we have, the more units we've got, the better housing stock we've got, I think we would be surprised to find what the ripple effect of that kind of increased inventory might be.
And I know I'm going to be outvoted, so I won't belabor it, but I'll just say, even in the research on this, we just have to be really honest and clear with ourselves, that supply-side only for working-class people, and I use that example intentionally, will not benefit from these supply-side solutions, except for like 30, 40 years from now, when the new inventory starts to age, there's still benefits to doing the supply-side, you know, I do support it, but even that knock-on effect, it's going to be decades before it benefits kind of really working-class or working poor families, and that's my concern, is that piece of it, but I understand what you're all saying.
And I agree entirely, I don't disagree, when you say supply-side alone, that's the key word, but without supply-side, we got nothing, so anyway.
Yeah, and I appreciate your points, they're very good.
So, are we ready for a vote?
So, the resolution that's being moved is granting a critical slope waiver for residential development referred to as Belmont condominiums.
With the six conditions?
Yep.
Okay, and it's been seconded, okay, I forget, Ms. McGill, did you have any comments? Have I been ignoring you, I apologize?
No, do we have to do public, are we doing, is public comment on this?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
And we had a public comment anyway, but it's not a public hearing.
And I also just want to double-check, we are voting on a critical slope waiver, correct?
Yes, it's one-of-one reading.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, you want to call the vote?
Councilor McGill.
With the six recommendations from the city engineer and the Planning Commission, all of which know more about critical slopes than I do, I am voting yes.
Counselor Payne?
No.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, special use permit for 1113 Fifth Street Southwest, Mr. Alfley again?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, actually, I don't think I introduced myself last time, so I will just for the record this time, Matt Alfley, City Planner- so I will just for the record this time. Matt Alfley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. Uh, tonight, you will be voting on a resolution granting a special use permit for an automatic, automated car wash at one-one-one-three Fifth Street Southwest. Green Clean Albemarle LLC, the contract purchaser represented by William Mullin Law Firm, has applied for a special use permit pursuant to Code thirty-four-seven-nine-six and thirty-four-three-five-eight. The subject property is identified as tax map impartial twenty-one B zero-zero-four-four-zero-zero and is owned by Patriot Bank. The subject property has street frontage on Harris Road and Fifth Street Southwest. The proposed car wash will have a main building fronting on Fifth Street Southwest with parking, pay station, vacuum, a dumpster, and ingress/egress from Harris Road. Off-site improvements include pedestrian markings across the entrance to Willoughby Square Shopping Center. The subject property is zoned highway mixed-use corridor with an entrance corridor overlay. On October eleventh, the planning commission held a hybrid virtual and in-person public hearing with city council. During the public hearing, two members of the public spoke, and they had concerns related to noise, safety at the intersection of Fifth Street Southwest and Harris Road, impacts of the car wash on the value of surrounding residential properties, and the overall aesthetics of the development. The planning commission and city council had a long conversation relating to the project and the public good threshold for SUPs in general. There was a long conversation on if car washes would benefit the city, city's residents at this location, if it was the best use for the site. For the most part, planning commission felt any noise generated from the vacuum, uh, compressors could be mitigated with conditions. Although traffic is a major concern for the intersection, the planning commission and the city's traffic engineer believed the car wash would, would not create an undue burden on the intersection or create, uh, any additional traffic that would not be produced by a by-right development. Safety was a concern, and a condition was proposed that would, that would update traffic markings warranted by the traffic engineer. Planning commission voted four-two to recommend approval to city council with the conditions found in the attached resolution. During the applicant's presentation at the public hearing, they stated they were looking to move the vacuum producers compressors, I'm using compressor and producer interchangeably, but it's the vacuum producer, to the center of the site and enclose them, uh, to reduce noise. This new configuration is shown as attachment B in your materials tonight and is compatible with staff's recommendations in the attached resolution. This, this concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer questions, and the applicant is also present and can answer questions, and they have a short presentation.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Alfley?
Yep.
Ms. Long, are you here to?
I have a question.
Okay.
What is, since this is an SUP, that means it's not by right, what is the, what is the allowable uses currently in this area?
So this, uh, I won't go through all of them, but things like, uh, gas station, that can also have vacuums is by right. Uh, restaurant, um, is by right. Tires, uh, car sales is by right. Tire refurbishing is also by right. Um, there are, just to name a couple other things, uh, you have, uh, amphitheater up to three-hundred persons is by right. Uh, of course, house of worship, um, bank, financial institution, which is already there, uh, health clinic up to two thousand square feet, and, uh, is also by right. Uh, private club is by right. A lot of, uh, car-centric, uh, uses are by right in the highway.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Valerie Long with the law firm of Williams Mullin. We're representing the applicant, Green Clean Express Wash. Joining me tonight is Craig Van Bremen, who is a local resident, who is the real estate developer for his, the company he works for. We also have two representatives from our project team participating virtually, virtually with, there with Kemley Horn. We have a civil engineer for the site as well as a noise engineer. I do have some slides I'd be happy to show. I believe Mr. Delahunt has, has those. I know three of you are at the public hearing. Mr. Wade and Ms. McGill, I know you are not. I don't know if you've seen the video or not. Many of the slides are very similar to what you've seen already. Um, I, I will just say I'm happy to cover those. I know my time is limited, and I don't want to be repetitive. But I do want to address quickly the issues that were the primary focus of the public hearing, and those are the potential concerns of impacts related to noise, lighting, and traffic. With regard to noise, we contend that the proposal to develop the site as we show on the concept plan, particularly with regard to the enclosing the vacuum producers within an enclosure along with the trash dumpster, that that will sufficiently mitigate noise, particularly in addition to the plantings that are proposed around the boundaries of the property. Since that public hearing, we have had the, our noise consultant prepare a study that looked at just what reduction would you have just by enclosing those producers. And I will show you that slide, just as an example. So we're very confident that we can comply with the recommended condition from the planning commission, which is actually far more stringent than your basic noise ordinance. It essentially applies the nighttime noise standard or limit to this use at all hours. Um, with regard to lighting, there was a lot of concern about the site lighting and concern by neighbors that the headlights would, um, go into their windows in the evening. We have proposed a number of provisions. One, all of the light fixtures would have to be, um, downshielded per the condition. The site will also go through the entrance corridor review board, so that their regulations will apply. But even to the extent, um, any fixtures didn't, the proposed condition is that all fixtures be full cutoff, downshielded. We're also proposing a small wall around the boundaries of the building to help further screen car headlights, as well as substantially additional, uh, plantings. And I'll show those on slides. And then finally, with regard to traffic, uh, there's a lot of discussion about this. There were some questions about, do we, do we review the trips from this use compared to other uses by right? And there was a lot of confusion by that, about that, I believe. And I know at the commission meeting, the city traffic engineer indicated that he did not have any concerns with regard to traffic safety issues from this site. He noted that the projected uses will be, will result in fewer trips than have been, uh, in use from the prior use of the bank, as well as a number of other by-right uses. And Ms. McGill, I was happy that you asked about the other uses that are permitted by right, because I was jotting down a number of them just before we started. And as you can imagine, all of these uses would generate substantially more trips than this car wash. A medical office building, dental, dental building, for instance, those generate a lot of trips. Movie theaters, a music hall, grocery store, home improvement, pharmacy, general retail, consumer services, public health clinic, hotel without any limit on the number of rooms, um, residential with no maximum density, a data center, gas station, um, as, um, Mr. Alfley mentioned, those can have vacuums. So with regard to the trip generation, there's, the car wash use, and we have a slide that I'll show you, is based on the trip generation manual that traffic engineers use. The car wash use will generate fewer trips than either the prior bank use or a vast majority of those by-right uses. You all may recall at the commission meeting, the example cited several times was a Boto's restaurant. And I have a slide I'll show you that the Boto's or a similar restaurant of that size would generate twenty percent more trips during the peak hour than would the car wash. So based on all of that information, and there's no articulated, um, particular element about this use that would create a particular traffic impact or safety issue compared to any other use. So we think we've mitigated all those concerns. We're certainly happy to answer any questions. And if I could, um, ask Mr. Delahunt to scroll to the next slide. The highway zoning, as Mr. Alfley mentioned, it's the highway corridor. It's to facilitate development of a commercial nature, more auto-oriented. Um, we, I don't think there's any dispute that that is, the use is consistent there. Next slide. The recently adopted comprehensive plan designates the area for urban mixed-use corridor specifically for this reason. It's obviously on a primary commercial corridor. It describes that use as higher-intensity mixed-use development arranged along corridors between employment, commercial, and civic hubs of the city. We think that's a very appropriate designation. I will note, there was a comment in the planning commission meeting about, well, this use doesn't really comply with our new comprehensive plan because it's a one-story building, and this designation calls for between five and eight stories. I will note that is the recommendation for stories up to five feet or up to eight stories at key intersections. So it's not a, a minimum. Um, and the highway zoning district does not have a minimum number of stories. Next slide, please. Um, I'm going to go through these very quickly if I can, just images of the existing site. I ask you to keep these images in mind when you compare them to our proposed renderings that show substantial improvement in the visual aesthetics of this currently dormant vacant site that is, I would say, a significant ISO, not generating any vitality of any kind for the city. Next slide. You can see the practical dearth of all landscaping, and that which is there is obviously not well-maintained or attractive. I think it would be better to just take that down. Next slide, please. And likewise, it's, it's pretty bare. It's pretty awful. Old zoning, certainly before your regulations were improved. I would note, a new bank could move into this building tomorrow and do nothing more than perhaps put up a new sign. Um, I would contend that would not be to the city's benefit. Uh, next slide, please. Similarly, by the way, you could have a new, another use. A medical office building could go in there. Um, a restaurant, lots of things could go in that building without any changes, things that would not trigger a site plan. This is our conceptual plan. Next slide, please, and showing that important element. This is a voluntary addition. Um, we know there's a big issue with, uh, pedestrian safety in this area right now, so we're proposing a voluntary sidewalk in that location to improve that, uh, pedestrian safety. Next slide, please. Um, this is the location where the, uh, vacuum producers would be located, right with the trash dumpster. Um, we moved them away from the Harris Road and the neighbors to reduce the noise levels. Next slide. We're also proposing a so-called S-three level of screening. That's the highest level of screening in the city zoning ordinance, um, along the Harris Road boundary. Next slide. Uh, that's just showing overhead renderings. I'm going to ask to go through these quickly if I can. Just wanted to highlight that, um, crosswalk. This is, and you all know this area. You can tell where these images are to try and, again, highlight the improvement in landscaping, reduction in pervious area, substantially more visually pleasing. Um, this is the view from Harris Road. Um, that's the plantings in front of where the vehicles would be located. Next slide. Uh, this shows the sidewalk. Um, again, the plantings and looking at the building. Next slide. Um, the sort of, what we have now versus what this site could look like in terms of, uh, visual aesthetics. Um, it would take what is an ISO and turn it into a more vibrant use that is appropriately screened with plantings, appropriate modern, stormwater, and other site plan, um, provisions in place, um, would be far better for the community than the current vacant use. Next slide. Uh, that's the, where the, uh, noise-producing vacuum, uh, producers, excuse me, would be located there. Next slide. This is a study. I'm happy to come back to this. These are images from the noise study that was conducted by the engineers since the planning commission meeting. And on, the image on your left shows what the noise levels would be just by moving those producers away from Harris Road and more to the center or southern edge of the site, but not enclosing them. And the image on the right shows the noise levels that would result from enclosing them. And as you can see, frankly, in both instances, the noise levels on the residential side and the north side of Harris Road are well under forty, the, the condition recommended, which is fifty-five decibels. So there's not even anything over fifty beyond the boundaries of the site. Next slide. So it complies with the zoning, the noise ordinance. It complies with the recommended conditions by the planning commission. And our noise study also concludes that the anticipated noise from the project is actually lower than the existing ambient noise levels surrounding the site, which are largely traffic from Fifth Street and others. Next slide. Uh, one other change, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but just for clarification, there's a small wall that was there. Next slide. You'll see that we're proposing to extend that and raise it. That will help both with further noise mitigation, as well as screening the vehicle headlights. Next slide. And that shows how that would look from a different vantage point. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the trip generation study that Kemley Horn's traffic engineer has prepared. As you can see there at the top, the, um, prior use, which is a by-right use of the bank, generates on average eighty-one trips during the peak hour period, which is actually two hours. And then, next slide. You'll see by comparison, the proposed car wash use is seventy-eight trips, um, during the peak hour, so it's slightly less than the drive-in bank. And then you can go to the next slide and you'll, sorry. Um, those are the other uses. The engineers specifically, after hearing the discussions about the Boto's as an example, that would count as a fast-food restaurant. If it had a drive-through window, the numbers are slightly different than if it doesn't. But even a Boto's without a drive-through window will generate ninety-four trips during the peak hour period compared to seventy-eight for the car wash, which is a twenty percent, um, difference between the two.
I can't help but notice that, that in and out ought to equal one another, and they don't. What's going?
I don't know. I will, um, ask if, um, one of our engineers from Kemley Horn can address that question.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Well, it, it's not a bad question. It makes sense. Um.
Are you storing up people inside the facility?
I don't know.
Anyway.
Good question. I'll find out, because I should know that anyway. But thank you. Uh, next slide. I think that's just about it. Yeah, that's it. Um, if I may one, make one other point, there were also some comments and questions at the last meeting about, you sort of, the standard of review. Why do we have a special use permit requirement for this use? What's our finding? Uh, do we assume it's bad unless we show there's something special about this use, or do we assume it might be okay unless we show something otherwise? Um, you know, your ordinance states that it's a special use permit. Um, in fact, I will read to you from your ordinance. It says, "There are certain uses and developments that by their nature require an additional regulation beyond the general requirements applicable to a particular zoning district to protect the welfare, safety, and convenience of the public. They may be permitted within a particular zoning district pursuant to an SUP." So I always describe it as, those are uses that might be okay in this location, in this zoning district, but they might not be. And it requires a case-by-case analysis of all of the different factors. We think based on the, um, ability to mitigate the concerns for noise, lighting, and traffic, and any other uses, or, excuse me, any other impacts, that this proposal satisfies that test. And in addition, even though I would contend there is no requirement that it provide a so-called special benefit to the community, I would say it nevertheless does provide a number of benefits. Probably the easiest is which is the new sidewalk that is proposed in that location, given the particular concerns for pedestrian safety. It provides a convenient service to residents and businesses to wash their vehicles in a convenient location, right off of an urban corridor. It's very convenient. It will allow people like me, driving through the corridor, to just pull right off, get my car washed, and head downtown instead of having to drive through neighborhood streets, for example, that would create more impacts.
Of course, there is a car wash about two-hundred yards away.
More than one of them.
I'm sorry.
There's already at least one car wash about two-hundred yards away.
At the, um, Tiger Fuel at Fifth Street Station?
That's the one I'm thinking of. You may know of another one. But anyway.
I think there's another, and it's not as close, but it's in the corner.
There may well be. Um, this one, you know, a, as you know, there's always a market for those. It's a competitive business. It will certainly, that, I will say, as one who drives Fifth Street, uh, twice a day, that, uh, gas station is extremely hard to get in and out of, because you have to then try to figure out how to make a U-turn to get going back up, um, to, uh, downtown. So, um, anyway, this will provide many benefits. It has environmental benefits, the, uh, recapture of eighty percent of the water. Far better for all of us to wash our vehicles at a commercial car wash than in our private driveways where the water and the detergent runs off without any mitigation. driveways where the water and the detergent runs off without any mitigation. It also involves redevelopment of a vacant parcel in a key location along a city corridor. Again, that parcel's dormant, it's really an ISO, it's not generating much tax revenue, and it could certainly generate substantially more. Yes, there is not really any trips from that vacant building right now, which is a good thing, but that comes at the expense of looking at that building and having it look vacant. There'll be less impervious surface with the car wash. And it talks about the fact that all of the other uses that could go in there, which I would contend create far more impacts on the neighbors and the residential areas in the community than would this use, particularly with regard to traffic and potentially noise as well.
Can I ask you a question about your before and after picture?
Sure.
It looks like in your after picture, I don't know whether this is something you intend to have it show, but it looks like there, the utilities have been undergrounded.
I think that is right. I'm not, well, I should say, I don't believe the renderings are necessarily intended to show absolutely everything.
Because if you look at these pictures here, you can see there's a rather large and prominent power pole right on the corner there, and it is not visible in your after picture, or frankly, any of the other drawings that have been done about that. I didn't know if there was in fact going to be something undergrounded there or what.
Thank you. I appreciate you pointing that out. I don't believe that is part of the proposal. I would ask Ryan Perkins with Kemley Horn, the civil engineer, unless you have any comments.
That's the service of the building, that's the mercy of the union power.
Yeah.
That's the main feed coming into the building. So if they're overhead, the Dominion engineers, engineers will design the power to the site.
Well, I mean, I know from our own dealings with Dominion is, if you want to underground something and they don't want to underground it, they're going to charge you half a million bucks.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons, I was curious what was going on there. Okay. I have no, nothing else.
All right. Thank you.
Sina, do you have something? You just suddenly popped up there. So, okay. Other questions, other counselors?
No.
Well, let me, let me say, I want to talk a little bit about some of my comments at the planning commission meeting, and I still kind of feel like for it to, for us to grant a special use permit, it sort of feels like we ought to be, like there ought to be some particular benefit to us. And I'll say, you know, as my oldest son got his first job at a car wash, I know that car washes provide jobs for people, and that's fine. And I don't know what the, but then I look at the, both the definition of what is supposed to go into a special use permit determination, and one of the conditions or one of the methods of voting on something like this or understanding it is to compare it to the district as a whole. And the district that it's located in, the highway corridor district, says, for a commercial nature that is more auto-oriented than the mixed-use and neighborhood commercial corridors, development in these areas has traditionally been auto-driven, and the regulations established by this section continue that trend. So that's, that's what we have said we intend for that area. And I have to say that it's, to a certain extent, inconsistent with what I would like to think we would have for an entrance corridor, which would be a somewhat higher standard. But that's not what we've actually written in the zoning ordinance.
Well, and my understanding in the future comprehensive plan update is that corridor would be mixed-use in a way that is not as auto-centric. At least, that was my understanding.
Yeah. I don't know about that, and I don't know that I can really base a decision on what might happen the year from now. Anyway, I just want to say, I've thought about it and sort of wrestled with it a fair amount and have, have kind of decided that maybe my comments last month were a little more snobbish than they needed to be. I still frankly don't think it's a particularly good use, but I also think that the ordinance, as we've got it written right now, pushes me in the other direction.
Well, just, I'll reiterate, you know, the comments I had at the planning commission meeting. I know, you know, we got the horror stories of the other buy-right uses, which were meant to scare us into thinking we have no other option, but I think it's interesting that all of them sound better than a car wash. I mean, I think a restaurant, a doctor's office, some other use that's actually a place where you would go to and live rather than just driving your car through it. But I guess I would say, you know, let's be honest, this is a national corporate chain. They plug this into some formula they probably have because there's multiple car washes on the corridor. Price shows you'll make money on it. I'm sure they will make money on it. But there's nothing in our special use permit process that requires us to approve it just because it meets some minimum standard. And I don't think this aligns with our future comprehensive plan. It's basically kind of setting out Fifth Street to be centered around, basically, drive-through auto-centric businesses, and we're going to be encouraging that pattern of development, which beyond even just the number of car trips, I think, isn't aligned with kind of our future plans for that Fifth Street corridor, including our smart-scale applications and the plans we have for more pedestrian residential-focused development there. I also think it's remarkable that one of the uses could be housing, and we're going to be using our discretion to say it will definitely be car wash rather than any potential for housing. And it's true, that might not happen with buy-right uses, but when I look through them, every buy-right use seems, there are a lot that could be better than this. There are some that would kind of be, maybe you could say they're kind of as uninspiring for us, but there's none that are worse. And so for that reason, you know, I'm still in the same place I was at the planning commission meeting of, I don't think this really aligns with zoning best practices to be using our discretion with an S U P to approve.
I would note that the highway corridor district designation recites, "This district provides for intense commercial development with very limited residential use."
But...
"It is intended for the areas where the most intense commercial development in Charlottesville occurs."
But I don't think our long-range planning aligns with where that's at right now, although I could, my memory could be wrong.
Well, and I, and I actually would agree with that. And I, as I said at the planning commission meeting, I think I said, or something I was thinking, that I'm not sure that 15 years from now, we're going to look back on it and say, boy, the best and highest use of that land was as a car wash.
I agree.
But it's also what I think that the ordinance that we have in existence right now pushes us towards.
But would you, and I won't belabor it, because I imagine I'm outvoted here again, but, no, I'm not voting for it. Well, maybe I'm wrong. But would you, you know, my read of our S U P ordinance is that there's nothing that would require us to approve this. Would you disagree with that reading?
No, I would not.
Yeah, I, yeah. I, first of all, I respect people that are doing this kind of work. I want that to be clear. This is, there's nothing, just because this may not be the highest and best use, we may want to put this piece of property, I don't want anyone to feel like, you know, there's some sort of unwillingness to, I mean, we need commerce in the city, we respect people that are entrepreneurs, and for whatever that's worth. I have to think, though, along the lines of what Mr. Payne has suggested, most of what he says, I agree with. I also have to think in terms of my constituents and the people that I know that I would be talking with, and I can't say that I've run a scientific poll, but I have enough of a sense of the community to say, is this, is this what you'd prefer to have here? And again, it's not like we can compare against an infinite array of options, but just sort of using, you know, what I'll call a gut, and I won't use that phrase, I hate that word, but just using what I think in my conversations with constituents, what I think they would want there, what I think they would think would be the best and highest use, particularly in our city, is we want to be as less car-centric as possible. We're trying to do everything we can to minimize climate change here. I just can't with good conscience vote for this. So it's no judgment on the project, it's no judgment, not that that matters, my view on that anyway, but I just can't with good conscience vote for this S U P.
I think I'll be supportive of it. I think that it's a use that will maybe be here for, you know, until the area becomes more pedestrian-friendly. I work, you know, Fifth Street at the county office building, and I ride it, you know, this several times a week as well, and, and I think that, that this is an appropriate use. I think that we're going to begin a wave of uses, and, you know, until we approve the zoning ordinance, I just don't think that we can say we don't like this or we want things changed until we approve it. So I think that we just, you know, this is, this should give us some, some initiative to, you know, prove it as soon as possible, you know, when it comes through. And I think that we will, but otherwise, I think I'm fine with this use, so.
Counselor McGill, you got some thoughts for us?
Well, if there's no more discussion, I would move to deny the special use permit requested within zoning application number SP 22.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'd second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So what is the vote?
To deny.
Okay.
Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Sort of unnecessary, I suppose, but, no.
Vice Mayor Wade?
No.
So the motion passes, motion to deny passes three to two.
Forgive me, I realize I may be out of line. I would ask for you to reconsider the vote based on the criteria for how you evaluate special use permits. With all due respect, Counselor Pinkston, special use permits are, as described in the ordinance, not about, is this the use we prefer at this particular location, but is this a use that will create adverse impacts on the neighborhood, the community? And if so, are there conditions that we can, that could be imposed to mitigate or prevent those impacts? So I would contend that's the appropriate standard of review, and we believe we have satisfied that. I fully respect and understand your opinions. I, you know, if I were planning the site, I might put something there different as well. But the use, you know, in the highway corridor zoning district and in the urban mixed-use corridor, as it's described in the new comprehensive plan, higher-intensity mixed-use development, the entire block there is owned highway. And Mr. Payne, I certainly also respect your comments, and they're excellent points. Just for the record, I was not intending in any way to scare anyone about those other uses. My point was to compare the different number of vehicle trips with a focus on traffic in particular. I agree that some of those other uses would be very advantageous there. There's not a buyer for those uses at the moment, but this use will generate, there's evidence this use will generate far more trips than many of those other uses.
So as a matter of Robert's rules and so on, only someone who voted for can ask to reconsider the vote. Any of those who voted for the motion asked to reconsider it?
Can I make comments or is that?
Well, let's, first, first question, anybody wishing to reconsider?
No. And I would also just note for myself, I do think there are adverse neighborhood impacts based on the noise generated as well, so.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you, we are just about to the public comment period, since this is the last item on the agenda. Will it come to you in just a second? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Long.
Thank you.
So there was no, nobody wishes to reconsider. We have no other business. Are there any other business items for consideration? Any matters that we wish to have the city manager follow up on?
Yeah, and someone may have done this, the young lady that wanted was from Preston Plaza.
Right, Preston Place.
Place, I'm sorry. I assume we have some ordinance for parking, that restriction, I'm getting kind of loopy now. It's, it looks like, you know...
Permit parking.
Permit parking, yes. We do have a process. If someone could just get her that information to, I don't know if it's a petition to sign or, I don't know exactly, I assume it's not a petition.
Who handles the permit parking? Is that through N D S or is that?
No, that's, I think, the parking is in, with Chris Ingel.
Is what?
With Chris Ingel.
For neighborhood permit parking?
Oh, permitting, probably N D S.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been in touch with Ms. Marshall about a number of things. I'll check on that and get back to you.
Okay.
And let me say too, in part of our conversation today with the university, we raised the question of getting student affairs involved with, and working with the police department and the neighborhoods to kind of create a better relationship between the university-related or the fraternities and sororities in the neighborhood, so that we don't have, we can minimize situations like you had to attend to Friday night a couple of weeks ago.
And I will say that one of the things that I found most discouraging was the attitude of the parents of the students who were staying there. The parents were saying, why do these folks care? They're living on a street where fraternities already are located. And one of the parents said to me, well, it's Halloween, come on. I said, is there a Halloween exemption to the noise ordinance? Anyway. Okay. So the only other item that I would think we really ought to try to figure out whether we can talk about sometime soon, I know we have other things in the works for planning, but I think it's a fair question that was raised tonight as to whether there might not be at least one item that could be taken up sooner rather than later, and that is to decide whether we want to continue to have free gas hookups. We don't have to go all the way to completely de-gasifying Charlottesville to understand that maybe we don't need to be subsidizing something that in the long run, we're going to wish we weren't subsidizing.
Yeah, I, I wonder though if things are not as, quite as, I mean, I'm totally for the idea, but I think things might be a little more complicated than just being laid out in that ordinance. I mean...
Oh, they're much more complicated. I don't disagree with that.
I'm just saying, even for the short...
And we do have a consultant study underway.
Yeah, even for the short-term piece, I mean, in other words, if we were to just like vote on this right now, I don't think it can be practically effected.
So what is the story with the consultant? I know we had talked about it, but are we actually doing it?
We're doing it. The R F P has been issued. I don't know if it's been awarded yet. Sam, do you know, has it been awarded yet?
We're in negotiations at this time, hoping to have that resolved by the end of the year. The goal will be to have the consultants begin their work in January, and the study results in summer, June, July.
Okay.
Is there anything that would keep us from stopping the expansion? I mean, is there like contract, you don't have to answer this now, but I would be interested, maybe by the next meeting, if, to the mayor's point, is there, are there things that maybe we're contractually obligated where we can't just like today, say, no, we're not going to expand any further? Is there anything we could do?
We'll get back to you on it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. To not continue digging into the hole.
I would just add on to that, what I'm interested in is, I know we're doing that study, which my understanding is about kind of the long-range future of it, but I do wonder whether, and I know it's more complicated than the draft ordinance we got earlier today, although that was obviously a very valuable conversation piece. Not stopping connect... Not stopping connections, but stopping subsidy for them, if that's something that is feasible, we'd kind of have to do in parallel with that study. And particularly, I thought the conversation was interesting of, you know, the amount of money we spend on the gas hookup subsidies. Is that money possible to free up for subsidies for electrification? I won't pretend to know all the details, it's as easy as just saying, "Let's do it," but I am curious about kind of that conversation.
It's a valid question that came up. I also heard the statistics, and we'll look into it and get back to you.
Thank you. Okay. So now is the opportunity for the last public comment. We're final speaking opportunity for members of the public. I have up to three minutes. Sir, please identify yourself.
So Craig Van Breemman, 336 Bishop Gate Lane. So I actually live in the community, Mr. Payne. We do invest in other places in the community, but I was excited about this potential because I lived in the community and worked for years to find a parcel that had the right zoning so I could build a car wash in Charlottesville. We found the highway commercial corridor of Fifth Street, which is high-intensity automotive uses because we wanted to be respectful of the county's zoning. It's current zoning in place, not the zoning that it hopes to have someday, but the zoning that it has in place. And we did that, and we did everything right. We worked with the community. We mitigated sound. We did everything we possibly could, put sidewalks in for safety. Anything that the community asked for and anything that you all asked for, we tried to help with. And you still denied us based on what you want to do in the future, which I respect, and I hope that you get those things done. But right now, as a businessperson in the community, I have to make decisions based on what reality is today. In addition to that, I heard you say several times today, you're worried about low-income housing and low-income people. That's where people get a start with us. We have a ton of people that start with us at $15 an hour, and then they're running their own store in four or five years, making 70 grand a year. And you just took those jobs out of the community. So with that, I'll leave it to the commission, but it's very disappointing to see how this operated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to us?
Yes, Mayor Snook, we have one raised hand at the moment. Tanisha Hudson.
All right. Ms. Hudson?
You are on with counsel.
So first and foremost, Lloyd, since you always make things about you, your son worked at a car wash. So imagine him working at that same car wash today, trying to live in these developments that you all keep approving. Now, I'm not even upset with that man that just got up and spoke about wanting this car wash built in Charlottesville, because you all only seem to be pushing agendas for units in Charlottesville. You have two grocery stores, three, Harris, Tita, Kroger, Food Line on Fifth Street, and Reed. So you have four. You barely have enough grocery stores. You don't want to put a car wash, but you just approved another development that's going to be built that people that do these low-income jobs are not going to be able to live in. You got to make it make sense sometimes. Now, on to this H R C ordinance. I hope Todd Meier and his team in the Human Rights Commission do a better job addressing internal, on-the-job discrimination complaints, because how they handle Chief Brackney, Dr. Richardson, and other black individuals that have worked for this city has been piss-poor. And that they need to not use bias or be bullied by the city attorney or members of city council. And last but not least, what does your Zoom registration? When did the Zoom registration change? What do you need to know about an industry or organization or a job title or numbers of employees? Why is there a question and comment section? None of that, all of that is irrelevant to somebody attending a meeting, and you have all these required fields for individuals to attend a meeting that's open to the public? And when will City Hall be open to the public? Everybody else around this whole entire state, meetings are being conducted the normal way that they've been conducted, and you all still have a sign-up. Why? It's decisions like this that make people want to start running to knock y'all out of these positions. Because Brian Pinkston, you support every single development, but you don't support a business. You support every single development but a low-income development. One, that goes for you two, Lloyd, you, Cena, you as well. Michael was the only one that shot it down tonight, but y'all ran on affordable housing. It's crazy. So shackle up, get ready, lock up, build your red team, because you're going to need one. Because I'm going to move into a new unit, and I will be coming for one of y'all jobs. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Is there anybody else online who would like to speak to us?
Mayor Snook, there are no additional hands.
All right. Then I will close the community matters section, and there being nothing further to be done, we're adjourned. Thank you all.